Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. It is the fourth day of April 2023. We have a quorum here. I don't know where the Vice Mayor is.
He went out to his car.
He went out to his car?
Yeah.
Okay, so is his car here in the garage?
I assume so.
Okay. All right, well, let us begin our conference meeting. And we begin with communications. We had a few communications. From the Beach Business Improvement District, they want to have a joint meeting. So Greg, boy, they haven't met with the Commission in six years. That's a pretty long time. So maybe we need to meet with them.
Sure.
If you can have someone on your staff arrange a meeting with the Commission, maybe right before another Commission meeting in May or June, something like that, that would be helpful.
We can do that.
Yeah, great.
And Mayor, I just wanted to comment on that item, if I may, for two seconds.
Sure.
I also would love for us to be able to meet with some other groups that we don't really get a chance to talk with, the Economic Development Advisory Board and the Marine Advisory Board. There's a lot going on with those boards, and I think that we should schedule some time with them as well. And then lastly, on page five of six of the Beach Business Improvement District Advisory Committee minutes of February 13th. I did know-
Is there a comma missing?
No, actually, actually, this is about content, not necessarily about the grammar, so you'll be happy.
Okay.
On Roman numeral six, on the joint workshop with the City Commission where they discussed that.
Yes.
I think it's misleading when I read that it was noted that the Commission hears from citizens on the beach who do not like the events. I just wanted to clarify that. I don't think it's so much that citizens on the beach don't like the events. It's just that they don't like the way they're managed and, you know, planned and organized. I'm talking about the Beach Business Improvement District.
Right, which page are the minutes?
Page five of six, so the February 13 minutes that are in our backup.
In which item? I'm on five.
Roman numeral six. Where Sarah was talking to that board, she noticed a disconnect between the beach advocates and what the City Commission wants at the beach. Noted that the disconnect has always existed because the Commission hears from citizens on the beach who do not like the events. And I'm just going to take a little exception with that. I don't want people to have that perception that beach residents don't like the events. It's just a matter of, again, how they're managed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so perhaps, Greg, we could also have meetings scheduled with the Economic Development Advisory Board, who also sent us a communication asking us to continue to support Visit Lauderdale Food and Wine Festival and the monthly events in Fat Village and the Mass Art District. So I don't think we need reminding about that. I think we're all on board there.
We will do that.
And then the Planning and Zoning Board minutes. Not quite sure what they're looking for here regarding parking cost reduction requests. Is anybody here on staff, Ella?
Yeah, staff's coming up to explain that further, what took place and what they would like for you to evaluate.
What was that about, Chris?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Chris Cooper, Director of Development Services. So what the PZ Board is asking to do is for us to take a look at our parking requirements in the ULDR for specific uses. They received a few parking reduction requests, and based on standards like the ITE manual, they were able to justify requests because our numbers are a little bit higher than what that ITE manual currently says. So it's a good idea every now and then to go back and look at our parking requirements in ULDR to see if they still are consistent with professional standards such as the ITE manual.
Well, I know that we, I know that we examined the parking requirements for the downtown area, the central city area, and we made the decision that there'd be one, at least one parking space per unit. Now, we're talking about other parts of the city?
So these are specific uses outside of the rack. So for our specific zoning districts, so for instance, like a medical office may require three spaces in our code, but in the ITE manual, it may say now it's two. So it's to look at those specific uses outside of areas like the downtown to make sure that we're still being consistent or at least close to what those professional standards are.
I know, but we have, we have to be very careful about that, and I'll tell you why. The downtown rack, I believe originally it said that you didn't have to have any parking, correct? And if we look at that building that's just north of Broward Boulevard on Federal Highway that was built a number of years ago, that sits vacant and is often, it's often called the Darth Vader Building. One of the things that I protested from the beginning was the lack of parking in that building. And ever since that building was built, it sits completely empty. And the reason why is because there's zero parking. There's, I think, five parking spaces or six parking spaces associated with that building. And I knew this was going to happen. And, and now we have, we have this building that, very expensive, beautifully designed, and now sits vacant because there's no parking. So I just caution you, when you come to the Commission and say, we're looking to reduce parking, keep in mind, there still needs to be parking, you know? And I know it's cheaper for a developer to not have to create spaces for parking just to get his project done or her project done. But the reality is you still need parking, and if we don't require parking or we don't have parking at the, at the site, you know, we're going to end up with empty buildings. And, and we don't need that. See, that's an eyesore now, you know, a $20 million eyesore. It's really sad what happened there, anyway. Just my, just my two cents, yes.
You know, it's, it's interesting that you bring that up. So I read an article in the Wall Street Journal over the weekend, and it says, America has too much parking.
More exciting.
You know what? For me, that's, that's the, that's the kind of stuff I live for. But, but yeah, the article is called, "America Has Too Much Parking." Really? And so I read through this, and it echoes exactly what you're talking about. So planners, and I'm sorry if I offend the planners here, are trying to move cities to a posture where we reduce or eliminate parking entirely. In fact, several cities have already done that. And the goal is to try and get people to use mass transportation, which unfortunately we don't have in a robust quantity to actually make that feasible.
Nor do we have the capacity to do it because we're not in charge of mass, mass transportation, so go ahead.
Exactly, and, and the general concept in, in the transportation planning arena is that if you expand capacity, then you encourage usage. So the more parking you create, the more you incentivize people to drive. The more roads you build, the more you incentivize people to drive. So it's an interesting debate that's taking place around the country. I happen to share your perspective. When I first moved to Fort Lauderdale, I lived at New River Landing. Lovely building, great view of downtown, half a mile door to door from there to City Hall. Walked it once. I was drenched in perspiration, never walked it again. So not necessarily feasible for our climate and environment down here in South Florida. But, but that is something that is, that is being part of the larger transportation ecosystem is to eliminate parking. And, and it falls under a couple of different headings that they're trying to package it under. Sustainability being one of them, because everything that says sustainability sounds really good, and we want to be sustainable. So I echo your perspective. I think reducing parking is, is a little dangerous, and it winds up to buildings that, like you said, are underutilized as a result of not being convenient for, for folks to get to. So glad you brought that point up.
So it probably has to be considered on a case-by-case basis. I remember a number of years ago, this is quite a few years back, next to the Parrot Lounge, a French restaurant wanted to establish itself there. I don't know why, next to the Parrot Lounge, but a French restaurant wanted to go there. And the, the, the city required, I think, 15 or 17 parking spaces. And there's no, there is no parking, period. So, so there's no French restaurant, you know? But, you know, on a case-by-case basis, I guess we can, we can, you know, consider parking reductions. But as a policy to blanket the city with a no parking requirement, I just think is a dangerous path to follow, that's all.
Yeah, and so the way this came up was the Planning and Zoning Board had received several parking reduction requests based on specific uses. So in the case that this came up with, it was a, it was a hotel on Federal where our parking requirement in the code, I'm going to get this wrong, but let's say it's 1.5 spaces per room. And the traffic engineer was able to look at the ITE manual and come in and justify that, well, the manual says one parking space per room. So that's how they justify the reduction. So those are the kinds of situations the Planning and Zoning Board is faced with, and the ones that they've asked for us to take a look at, determine if there's some adjustments to be made.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, while Chris is there, can I just make, I did want to make a comment on when I was reading the minutes of that item, Chris, and I just think it's something that we really need to pay attention to. If you look at when this discussion happened for the March 15th, 2023 minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board, on page seven was the discussion of the project on the Quay on 17th Street. So it concerns me because the, you know, we've been through this with a, with an agenda item and a development project in District Two on Hendrick Isle where we're in court now over this regarding the 180-day statutory period in which the city has to make a decision on a development proposal. So when I, I actually did watch that part of that meeting that night, and this, this application, this project came right up upon that 180-day statutory period. It was that day, which does not even give us the chance to get to the City Commission. So I just, I'm hoping that we're going to be much more careful of that, of that statute because it, it really does us a disservice if we're not able to even hear a case. And we've been through this before, but what can we do to ensure that these kinds of deadlines are not run into right up until the last day where we then have to go and get a, an extension agreed upon by the applicant and us? It's just concerning to me, and I, I see it going down a path that could be very difficult for us.
No, I agree, and it is problematic. So one thing we've done is we've been a little bit more strict with our completeness reviews. The completeness review of a project is what kicks off that clock. So one of the things we've been doing prior, we would let people start that review with DRC without having certain things. people start that review with DRC without having certain things under the anticipation that we'd get that through the process. But with this timeline that the state's imposed, that's a little more difficult to do and puts us in a bad position. So we've been more strict about when we issue the completeness date, because again, that's when that clock starts. And we've been using that to also encourage applicants to give us extensions or waivers of that state-mandated timeline. So we've made some improvements in that way. We're working with the attorney's office to tweak the code a little bit, to make sure that we have more assurances and tools to use to make sure we don't run afoul of those deadlines. It is unfortunate that one got through. We're really, you know, trying to be mindful of that, and I think in most cases we are, but, you know, it did slip through.
Yeah, and it is problematic. The Planning and Zoning Board just approved that project by a five-to-three vote. And yet, I think if we wanted to call it up, I'm not even sure we could have.
No, we could. We did get a 30-day extension from the applicant to allow for the call-up period to take place. So we have been able to get extensions in those cases.
So that's good, because, let me tell you something, isn't that the building they want to build in the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you can barely find parking where there's no building there. So now they want to build a building squat in the middle of the parking lot, completely taking away all the parking. So what's the thinking there? Who would want to go to that restaurant knowing there's no parking? So how are we getting around that?
So they do provide parking, and again, I don't have the numbers in front of me today.
Where?
Within the project.
After it's built for three years.
It'll be replaced by a garage and surface parking lot that will meet code requirements.
Yeah, after three years.
362 spaces will be replaced by 415 spaces, and another 664 spaces will be provided on-site for the residential. So that brings it to 1,079 spaces.
Right. And what do we do in the three years when there are no spaces?
You can't park there.
Right. And all those businesses go out of business. So, I mean, we got to be smart about this. Anyway, all right.
Again, I am just really concerned about this 180-day statute.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we should, we've boxed into a corner again.
And it does box us into a corner. And I think that if sometimes, conversely, if we're finding that it's really not necessarily because of us, and that the developer, the applicant, is taking like, and then just a crazy amount of time to respond to comments, then we got to immediately ask for some sort of extensions and make them, or give them X amount of time to respond. Okay, thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Cooper? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Who just said that? Oh, hi.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but I'd kindly ask if the discussion on FWC can come up next, because we actually have some FWC agency staff members here that are available to address any of the concerns that you all may have.
Which item?
That is item Business Three.
Oh, sure. Wildlife sightings? Okay, we can take that up now.
All right, thank you so much.
Business Three?
Business Three. So we'll ask Chief Lynn to do the introduction, and we also have a biologist, Ms. Johnson, on the line as well, that she's going to appear via Zoom and talk about.
Are you gentlemen here regarding, why don't you come on up? You can all come up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner.
What, you don't like the spotlight? Come on.
I know that we've had some inquiries about coyotes, and thankfully, we have experts here with us today. So I think I'll turn things over to Ms. Johnson to start off with, and then we're available, or you're available to answer any questions that may arise. So, Ms. Johnson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and Chief Lynn for having me today. So I am going to be sharing some information. I plan to take about 10 minutes of everybody's time. And, you know, if you end up having questions at the end, that's great. Of course, we do have a much longer program available to communities, where we have a 45-minute program about coyotes, and then we have a lot of staff that can help answer questions as well. But so I'm going to give you the highlights today of some of the information that I hope the residents can receive and implement there in your community. So, yes, we do get a lot of coyote calls here at Florida Fish and Wildlife, and they are statewide. So we even have materials that we call Living with Urban Coyotes, because coyotes tend to thrive in urban areas in close proximity to keep them. You know, initially, coyotes were a midwestern, out west wildlife animal, but they eventually migrated to Florida through habitat loss and conversion into a lot of agricultural farms, as well as the decline of the red wolf, which was their main species that kept them in check, because red wolves are a bit bigger. We did have those in Florida. So they were established in all 67 counties by the early 2000s. And so that, of course, includes Fort Lauderdale as well. So coyote biology, just to understand a little bit about the wildlife, they are omnivorous, which means they eat anything and everything. They're very highly adaptable. That means they will eat garbage, pet food, falling fruit, you know, a lot of the things that we tend to have in our neighborhoods. As adults, they are about 25 to 40 pounds. So females are going to be the smaller, and the males the larger. The largest male that we've recovered during the stomach content study was 38 pounds. So they tend to appear larger because of the way their fur tends to be thicker, and they raise it whenever they feel threatened or scared. And so they tend to look bigger than they actually end up being. Their normal home range in a natural area is about 15 square miles. But what happens when they end up in a place like the city of Fort Lauderdale is that they only need about three square miles to survive, because they're finding all of their basic needs bad, water and shelter, in a much smaller area. And that's because you just tend to produce a lot of resources as people. Female female that mate for life and establish that three-square-mile range are made in the winter, and the pups will emerge in the spring. And so typically, before the pups leave the den, the male will survey their territory for any potential threats to his mate or pups. And then that's when we tend to get a lot of calls, and the coyotes are being very visible to our residents. On average, their pups are going to be about six, a litter size of six.
Well, Ms. Johnson, you got, you froze up.
The average size is six. We tend to find it more in the four-to-six range. Sorry?
You're freezing up. Can I just say something? I understand.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I understand from the Vice Mayor that we have scheduled for your longer talk in a couple of weeks. So.
I'll just, we, yeah, Rio Vista Civic Association has agreed to host the actual 45-minute talk. If you could make it down here, they will contact you directly in about, within the next two weeks for people who want more information or in-depth question and answering. So we are going to take you up on that very kind offer. We'll, not just to Rio Vista, for the whole District Four and the whole city, anybody who wants to attend, but we'll schedule that down the line. Thank you so much.
Well, let me just ask you, right now, would you, is it your assessment that these wildlife are or are not a threat to the general population?
So based on our experience, research, information, and we do record all calls that we receive here at the FWC, a large majority of those calls are sightings-based. So not any type of behavior described to us by the public that may indicate that you have any coyotes in your area that are presenting themselves as a public safety threat at this time.
Okay. Now, are you only examining just these animals, or are there other members of the animal kingdom that you're also examining? I remember years ago, bobcats were the big threat, and I guess they're fewer in number, or they're scared of people. But how about, you know, like pythons and all kinds of wildlife that we read about are slithering their way eastward? You know, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so we do, in addition to, my program is the Wildlife Assistance Program, and so we take all the calls from the public when they have concerns about wildlife safety, with the exception of alligators. So we do take all the bear calls, and we don't have those in the city. But coyotes are a big one. Bobcats can be. They don't rank as much usually in call volume, because they don't live in the same type of biological atmosphere. They don't live in groups. They don't have multiple kittens. You know, they're much smaller, they have a smaller presence. They tend to be more secretive. But we also talk in public about, you know, raccoons and opossums. So we don't tend to see a lot of issues between people and pythons. Let's face it, we're speaking about that. You know, we are, we do have a concerted effort, of course, to try to remove or at least suppress as much of that population as we can, so it doesn't become a human health and safety risk.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Johnson? Because I know that the evening program with.
Right. Now, as you discussed, you had like a three-point suggestion for people when they encounter them, as far as not feeding them, keeping small children and pets away, as well as making a lot of noise, not going inside, but doing whatever you can to discourage them and make life uncomfortable. Any other thoughts that you, or very quick things you want to impart on the community?
Yeah, yeah. You got it exactly right. The food source, walking pets on a short leash, don't leave them unattended in a yard. And then the one that most people struggle with the most is being the dominant animal in the situation when you do encounter one. You know, coyotes really don't want to be around humans, but they don't recognize and identify their fear of humans with vehicles and structures. So that's why they live and are so highly adaptable to urban environments. But we do encourage in public to make loud noises, you know, make them feel uncomfortable, make them feel like unwelcome guests. Now, what I will say is they're not going to leave the area, but they are going to change their activity time so they don't encounter you anymore, because they don't want to be around you. And that itself provides a chance for level of safety for people, pets, and coyotes as well.
One other issue that we had discussed, and I just want you to share it with the community. People ask me all the time, why do we not catch them and euthanize them or relocate them or take them out of our neighborhood? You had an answer for that, if you want to just address that, if you can.
Absolutely, yeah. One of the reasons that we don't necessarily encourage or practice any kind of trapping, relocation, or lethal removal, even though those are legal options for the public, is because they have such a high reproductive rate. They're highly reproductive. So if you remove one of the mates that are the established pair, they'll just recruit another mate from a family group nearby. If you remove pups, they're going to increase their pup production the next year to replace any that are lost. So if we're, once you start with removal, you end up with more than you started with in most cases. They're also highly intelligent and don't often go into a trap. And they have figured out how to thrive living around people in dense urban habitats.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chief, any other thoughts you'd like to share, Ms. Johnson?
No, I pretty much hit the highlights. I'm very thankful that you guys have me today. That we'll be doing a longer program later, so that we can have our staff answer any of the questions that your residents might have, so we can address their concerns.
Okay, great. Any other questions that anybody on the commission has?
I do have the chief, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I had a question of the chief. So, Chief, how prevalent is this issue in the city of Fort Lauderdale?
We've had very few complaints at the police department.
I mean, any particular number for a year?
I looked, don't know how many, but I think in the last six months, or like maybe three.
Three in the last six months. And I'm wondering, is it just District Four? Because I've told the Vice Mayor to stop feeding the coyotes. And I, so is this just District Four?
No, I only know that area off the top of my head.
Is it just, I'm just wondering. Okay, I'm just wondering where this is. Okay.
When I saw the Agenda Wildlife sightings in urban areas, I thought you were talking about guys doing wheelies at intersections, but no, no. All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything that you wanted to add?
Did you want to add anything? You came all the way down here. We should at least let you talk, right?
Yeah. So basically, I just wanted to kind of.
Your name?
I'm Officer Zach Beppel with FDC.
Welcome to Fort Lauderdale.
Thank you. Basically, just if the public does call about a sighting of coyote, we obviously record that, but we're not going to send an officer out just to respond to a sighting. If there's an attack on a pet or a family member, we will respond. We'll come out, we'll do a report. But just a sighting, we don't have the manpower to go out and deal with.
So what number would we call if there's an incident with, or an encounter with a coyote?
I don't have a number off the top of my head. I'm not sure if Ms. Johnson here has it, but our West.
Yeah. Sure. So during the day, Monday through Friday to five, you would have access to a biologist. And so you can call the West Palm Beach office to speak with one of my staff. I'm going to give you two phone numbers. So Monday through Friday to five, it's 561-625-5122. If it's after hours or on the weekend holidays, then that's when you would call our enforcement dispatch, and that is 888-404-3922. And even if you call after hours on the weekend, one of my biologists will be in touch with you, either through a phone call or mail as well, so.
But if someone is having an immediate encounter with a coyote, I guess they would call 911, correct?
They could. If there, the 911, I'm not sure what, the chief could probably speak to that a little bit more, but the calls should end up at the FWC if it's an encounter with one of our wild animals, and that would be the 888 number.
I know, but if you're in West Palm Beach and I'm being attacked in Rio Vista here, I'm not waiting for you.
Yeah, yeah. So 888-404-3922 is the number you'd want to call if you need immediate assistance, because you have an imminent, or you're in danger.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you. Thank you for being here, sir. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, moving back. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. CF1 Legislative Update. Daphne, are you here? So this is sort of an interim update, right? Because legislature's still in session, correct?
Yes, yes. Daphne Sandville, Government Affairs. Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners. This is the Week Five update. The House and Senate has just recessed temporarily for session. So I just wanted, well, for today. They're going to come back later today to take up any more bills that come onto the calendar. Just a brief update on what was discussed last meeting, but before I get into that, I wanted to go into our appropriations update. We had requested nine projects, and we have funding for five of them. So the Carter Park Improvement, we are in the Senate budget at $250,000. We had requested $272,500 for education enrichment. We are in the Senate budget at full ask, which is $704,836.
What was that line item for?
Pardon?
What was that line item for?
Education enrichment.
Education enrichment.
Yes, yes. So it's a summer enrichment program where we supplement the school board's programming in order to fill the gap for learning education.
Okay.
For the Riverland traffic calming, we had requested $1 million. We are in the Senate budget for $1 million. For community court, we have requested $100,000. We are in the Senate budget for $100,000, and in the House budget for $50,000. For the Galt Mile Street Safety Improvements, we had requested $500,000, and we are in the House bill budget for that full ask amount at $500,000. If you've noticed, I didn't say if we were in the House budget for Carter Park, education enrichment, Riverland, because we are not in the House budget, but we are looking during Budget Conference during Week Seven, which is the week of April, I was already in July, April 24th, where they are going to conference the budget, and we're looking to bring up to the ask amounts in both.
So is Commissioner Lamarcus participating with your office to try to get those into the House budget?
Yes, yes. He and the rest of our delegation members for Fort Lauderdale are working, as well as delegation members throughout Broward County, are working in order to get us to those ask amounts, or at least to meet the Senate budget in order to be in the full appropriations at the end of the year. Not yet in the budget, and I believe because they were categorized as water projects, are the stormwater pump station redundancy, which are the two generators, at $700,000. The sanitary sewer basin B14 at 1.5. They're not in the budget currently, but they could be in the water project list during Budget Conference when that is released. The Hardy Park Improvement was not funded in either the Senate or the House, which means it's out of play during Budget Conference. And Lauder Trail was not funded in either the Senate or the House budget, so it is out of play. But we're still working to see what could happen at the end.
What was the ask for Lauder Trail?
Lauder Trail was $900,000. $900,000. And Hardy Park was $555,000.
What do we want Hardy Park money for?
There were some improvements that needed to be made with, I believe, resurfacing some of the field.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of Ms. Sandville?
Mayor, I did. I was just curious as to maybe some of the latest and greatest.
I was just curious as to maybe some of the latest and greatest and some of the bills that were in our backup, if that's okay?
Sure.
Great, thank you. Hi, Daphne.
Hello.
Thank you for the report. So I went through Exhibit 1 and a lot of bills, and I'm just wondering, I just, I apologize, I did not have the time to actually check on every single one of them, there are so many.
Yes.
So on page, I'm on Exhibit 1 now, so actually, my pages are cut off and I apologize, but SB 0302, that's Government and Corporate Activism, that deals with ESG investing. So is that going to pass in your estimation, or do we know where that is? I'm just wondering in terms of that divesting and how, I've been reading a lot of articles about that and how that actually might be harmful to our state in terms of our finances, but is that going to go through?
I believe that one is stuck in committee. Most committees will stop meeting next week. If it is not put on the agenda for the particular committee that it is in, it will most likely fail.
Okay, again, so that was with regards to ESG investing. I'm looking at HB 0405. Interesting what's happening in the state, and I was wondering if you've heard any chatter about if this might also apply to municipalities, but there is a movement afoot to make school board races partisan and to run by party. If that passes, any inclination whether that is going to happen?
No, there hasn't been any chatter. It is also stuck in its respective subcommittees. Subcommittees have stopped meeting. Committees will stop meeting next week. So because it hasn't moved forward, those will most likely fail as well.
Will that have to go to a vote of all of the voters if that is something that will have to go to a vote?
Yes.
Okay, but right now, we don't hear that happening, and we don't hear that happening also as it might apply to municipalities.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving right along, and I'll make this quickly. HB 0935, Chiefs of Police. Any idea what the genesis is for that bill?
I do not know where the genesis is for that bill, but I can inquire and find out.
What is that bill about?
Okay, and then also in terms of, basically, the short version is requires employing agency to provide certain written notice to chief of police before he or she may be terminated, and require certain governing bodies to allow the chief of police to make full and complete response at a public meeting after he or she has provided written notice of termination.
Really?
Really?
Yes.
So, okay.
That one is not moving. It hasn't been heard, and it's, I believe it's second committee of reference, but I can inquire some more to see.
Okay, thank you. SB 0080, that's marriage between persons of the same sex. Now, is that moving anywhere? And it's interesting that that actually is proposed legislation. For those of you that might not know, the books on Florida, it is, marriage equality is still illegal according to the laws in the state of Florida. Obviously, the Supreme Court has had a different voice on that, as has the Congress, but we still have that on the books in Florida. So there is a bill that was submitted to get rid of that, get it off the books in Florida. Doesn't look like it's really moving?
It is not moving.
It's not moving?
No, and I can double-check just to make sure.
Okay, so it looks like we'll still have that on the books. God bless Florida. Okay, next item. HB 0363, Regulation of Single-Use Plastic Products. Any, I see it was withdrawn, House withdrew, but is there any movement on that as well? I know that there's a lot of preemption involved here with us, and we were able to do straws, but not much else, but no appetite, no appetite for that?
There is no appetite for that. It is not moving.
Okay, thank you. I was happy to see. Any movement with regards to food in secure areas? HB 0727 and SB 0778?
I am not sure, but I will double-check on that one. I haven't seen anything with that one.
Okay, thank you. Do we know anything about how it's moving in terms of HB 0251, Entertainment Industry Tax Credit Program?
That one is not moving.
Not moving?
No.
Okay, that would have been good for us in terms of our movie studio project. What about the SB 0288, Florida Main Street Program and Historic Preservation Tax Credits?
Give me that bill number again?
I'm sorry. SB 0288, Florida Main Street Program and Historic Preservation Tax Credits.
That one is stuck in committee.
The Florida Retirement System, HB 1121. Any, it looks like it was last I see in State Affairs Committee?
Yes, so usually the FRS, the Florida Retirement System, any of those bills get rolled into a 7,000 bill, which is the overall FRS retirement system bill that gets rolled into the overall budget. I know they had debated some parts of, I believe, what is in that legislation within that early this morning. I caught some bits and pieces of it, but I didn't get the full-on how they decided to roll it into second reading. Once the update comes out, I'll be able to analyze it and work with the city attorney's office to see how it does affect the city.
Okay, thank you. And I have mentioned this to staff, and I just wanted to also let you know as well, and we've talked about this, and I've talked about this with Susan and Greg as well. I'm hoping that next year, we can propose some sort of legislation for the Florida Retirement System. As it stands now, the city has to pay into the Florida Retirement System for all of us on this dais, even though some of us are not even eligible for benefits. I find that to be costly for the city, and I find it to be just not equitable. And I think maybe it could get some traction, but I'm hoping that you'll be able to maybe talk to Susan about that, and maybe we can get some sponsorship for that for next year. It just seems silly that we are required to pay into that every year, a hefty chunk of the salary for people that won't even be able to obtain benefits according to the current rules and regulations. So I wanted to just let you know about that.
Okay.
On HB 0327, this is an issue with many older condominium buildings in our city. What is the status of requiring older buildings to install fire sprinklers? And that bill was fire sprinkler system projects, but there's a lot of misinformation out there with regards to what's required. I know it was deferred for a few years, and buildings had a little bit more time because it is quite an expense, but do we know where that stands, or maybe even, chief, if you could tell us about, fire chief, I'm sorry, the police chief is getting up. But what is, what is, what is the status of that right now in terms of requirements for condominiums to install fire sprinkler systems in buildings that do not have them? It was a hot topic for a while, and I don't even know where this legislation is right now, but this, it looks like it was placed on a special order calendar. I'm not really familiar with what that is.
So special order calendar is when it gets placed on either the Senate or House special order, which means it's going to hit the floor for a full chamber vote. I do believe one bill is ready for special order, but if it does not get onto the calendar for a second, it will most likely die in messages. We have another 30 days to see where that goes, but I believe its companion bill is stuck in committee. I will have to double-check. I know the League of Cities is also working on that legislation by closely monitoring to see where it goes.
Okay, thank you. And then, Daphne, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And then, chief, if maybe you can just educate us as to what are those requirements and what kind of opt-out provisions or deferring of that policy do the older condominium buildings have in the city?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Stephen Golden, Fire Chief for City of Fort Lauderdale. In regards to the question, the finish line's been moved. Each keeps moving, so we don't actively do enforcement on what's in place at this time, providing the opportunity for those condos to catch up or to have the funds in place. You know, of course, we would encourage them to begin making the modifications to the older buildings, but we have the life safety inspections that are done on the buildings on a 40-year, and currently, the fire marshal at this time signs off when some of those life safety evaluations are done, based upon that the finish line keeps moving.
So do we have any idea if at any point in time, buildings will be required to install fire sprinkler systems?
I don't have that information at this time. Most likely that eventually we will reach a date when they'll be required to have them by. Once we pass that date, then there'll be enforcement after that.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe the answer to your question is, there is a requirement that all these buildings have sprinkler systems, but built into that requirement is the waiver process, which most buildings are still riding under. But I think that waiver process is being abbreviated each year, and I think at some point, it's going to, maybe, Mr. Spence, if you can get your office to come back to us with an answer, but I do believe that that waiver process is going to be eliminated completely, and the buildings are going to have to be retrofitted. So, but I do think that it's a good point that you raise, because we have a lot of buildings that are going to be subject to it, but I do know that a lot of buildings are retrofitting. I know, I think Corridge Towers, or at least one of the Corridge Towers, south, I think, or east, they've started to retrofit. And when that, when that panic first started, it was because everyone was told, oh, it's going to cost $20,000, $30,000 a unit for that to happen, when it was actually a fraction of that cost. So, but I know that the law was first implemented by then-Governor Scott after we had that tragic fire in one of the condo buildings. Not in our city, but it was somewhere in our state. And so, you know, but I do think that, so to answer your question, there is a requirement that you must retrofit, but there's a waiver process, and, but I believe that process is going to be soon eliminated. So maybe Mr. Spence's office can get back to you on that.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, chief. And then, Mayor, just finally, and I know that we've had this conversation as a commission, and I understand that there really is not that much of an appetite on this dais to issue resolutions concerning a lot of the legislation that is making its way through Tallahassee, and I know Daphne's opinion on that as well, especially as it relates to a lot of the state's cultural wars. But I do want to make just a couple of comments as a lot of these bills are coming to fruition now, and I do want to speak that on behalf of my constituents, because I am, I am very sad and I'm actually disheartened by our state's demonizing of citizens in Florida, especially as it relates to the LGBTQ-plus population. I want my colleagues to understand that one-half of 1%, one-half of 1% of the United States population identifies as transgender. One-half of 1%. And that number's even a lot less for children. So think about those percentages in proportion to the legislation that we're seeing coming out of Tallahassee. First, we witnessed last year the banning of transgender students from athletics. Then now, the gender-affirming care, healthcare is no longer allowed for transgender youth, and even healthcare for transgender adults, with the punishment being very severe for doctors who provide care for our citizens. In this year alone, more than 435, 435 anti-LGBTQ bills have been introduced in state legislations this year alone, and Florida is leading the way. We all know about the obsession with drag show performances in our state and performing arts centers being held accountable for those performances. And I will tell you why that rhetoric is harmful, why these laws are harmful. Just a few weeks ago in Ohio, a neo-Nazi rally took place at a drag queen story hour for children that parents took their children to. It got very ugly. They were actually chants of Sieg Heil from the demonstrators, and then one of the leaders of the demonstration was recently arrested for wanting to burn down an African-American church. These things are real, the legislation, there's not just words and actions, but severe consequences that result in harming of people and death of people. Polls overwhelmingly show that Americans oppose these anti-LGBTQ laws, just as they oppose laws being passed in Florida and elsewhere that restrict women's reproductive rights. We are now down to six weeks in Florida. Many women do not even know that they are pregnant within six weeks, and if they find out within those six weeks, because of the hoops that they have to jump through to get that abortion, it's almost impossible. So we're basically at a, at a level now where a woman does not have the right to choose an abortion. Lastly, Americans overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly oppose, overwhelmingly oppose the loosening of firearms regulations, and yet, our state is going in a different direction. We will now allow permitless carry, permitless concealed carry, and most likely, that will lead to open carry. All, all of this in the name of freedom, let alone the fact that most Americans overwhelmingly want to see increased background checks, they want to see training, they want to see licensing. All of that is out the window in Florida and no longer necessary. So again, all in the name of freedom, but that same freedom is also banning books in our state, eliminating education, and siphoning funds from public schools. You will see what will happen now with the universal voucher program, where even the wealthiest Florida citizens will be able to use that public tax money to send children to, their children, to private schools and religious schools. I read a great article recently where a rabbi said, you know, we should just do this the old-fashioned way. You want to send your child to a religious school or a private school that might teach what other taxpayers might not like? Then do it the old-fashioned way and pay for it. But that's no longer an issue in Florida. Everyone will be able to take advantage of that with no, with no, no benchmarks for income, not a problem. And I think that will hurt our public schools in a terrible, terrible way. So we're doing that while we're also banning books, and yet, you know, it's very interesting because while we do all of these things in concert, whether it's women's reproductive rights, anti-LGBTQ laws, permitless carry, I've never seen a book kill a child. And that is why, for me, the slogan, "Protect Our Children," just rings very hollow. Thank you, Mayor. That's it from me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions of Ms. Sandville?
Daphne, this is just for informational purposes. We on the dais know this, but just for the public. I understand that the governor did not veto the legislation we had asked him for, but just a recap on the affordable housing exemption from zoning, just to, okay?
Okay, so with SB 102, which is now on Chapter 202317, Laws of Florida, the governor signed it on March, I believe, 29th, late in the afternoon. So the bill would authorize, well, the count, let me backtrack. So the new law would have the municipality, so our local government, authorize multifamily and mixed-use residential as allowed uses in any area zone for commercial, industrial, or mixed-use if at least 40% of the residential units in the proposed multifamily rental development are, for a period of at least 30 years, affordable as defined in statute. And it would prohibit a county or municipality, or a main, or, yeah, it says a county or municipality may not require a proposed multifamily development to obtain a zoning or land use change, special exception, conditional use approval variance, comprehensive plan amendment for the building height, zoning, and densities authorized under the new law. In addition, for mixed-use residential projects, at least 65% of the total square footage must be used for residential purposes. It further says that we cannot restrict the height of a proposed development authorized below the highest currently allowed height for a commercial residential development located within one mile of the proposed development or three stories, whichever is higher. So that is the gist of the legislation. The 40% AMI threshold is pretty high, but if they do meet that threshold, then these would be the requirements, prohibitions, and what we are allowed to do.
And they can match height and density within one mile?
Correct.
So, so I know this commission authorized me to send a letter to the governor, which was sent, but he was very quick to sign that, that bill, so I'm sure it crossed the mail. But the reality is, within one mile of the downtown Regional Activity Center, there is no height limit. So all of our neighborhoods, all of our single-family home neighborhoods are now at risk, I'm sorry, yeah, and now at risk of having, you know, 500-foot buildings built right next to their single-family home neighborhoods. So I don't think a lot of thought went into this, and the governor did get my letter. Hopefully, maybe we can do a reforms bill next year. Hopefully, using our state legislators, we might be able to introduce some refinement of that bill. I know that it was, it was couched in the form of affordable housing, but they slipped in these other provisions, all at the behest of the development community, who tried to get them slipped in, thinking that no one would notice, but we did notice, but apparently, you know, the development community got their way this time around. So let's hope that we don't suffer any immediate setbacks from this, the consequences of this bill, and hopefully, we can continue to protect our single-family home neighborhoods going forward. home neighborhoods going forward.
Well, Mayor, maybe we can just push them past the 180-day statutory limit and then we won't have to worry about it.
Did you want to say something, Commissioner Beasley?
Um, yes, just, um, just piggybacking off of what you had mentioned, um, yes, this is going to be a risk for our community overall, our city overall. Just a sad state to think that someone would have disregarded, you know, possibly 150-feet building next to, um, neighborhoods.
Or 300 or 500.
Exactly. You know, 500. But, um, yes, I'm very disappointed with the, uh, passing of that bill.
Okay. Um, anything more? Any other questions for Daphne? All right. Thank you so much, Daphne. Appreciate it.
There were just two more things that I wanted you, or three more things to be aware of. I know. It's going to be very quick. Um, one of them was the financial disclosure for elected officials. Um, it would require mayors, elected members of the governing body, um, and municipal managers to begin filing a Form 6. I know currently a Form 1 is filed, so that means it would require more transparency and disclosure. And you wouldn't begin doing that until January 1st of 2024. So we're closely monitoring the bills, both, um, bills.
What's a Form, what's a Form 6?
It's the same as a Form 1, but it requires more detail with your banking and financial information.
Yeah, it's very detailed. It's like, uh, higher office have to, I mean, where you really have to list every single thing. And dollar amounts as well. Right now, we don't have to list dollar amounts on accounts and things like that. But you have to list values, dollar amounts, all that. What's the status of that bill?
So the, uh, both, the Senate bill passed its committees, it's ready for a vote on the Senate floor. The House version passed two of three committees, so we're closely monitoring to see if it stalls out on the House side.
Mayor, you still have time to sell.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to be, well, if I have nothing, I have nothing to disclose.
You'll be, you'll be okay.
And then, um, vacation rentals, uh, the good bill, um, and the bad bill are both stuck in their committees. They'll most likely fail if they are not agendoned on those committees by April 12th. So we're looking and hoping and working with the, um, chairs of the committees to make sure that they don't place them on the agenda, so they most likely fail during session. Um, there's the demolition bill that is still trekking along. We are working on the House side to see if we can stop it in the Commerce Committee, which is its last committee. We do have Representative Lamarcus sitting on that, um, committee, so we've, uh, proposed some amendments that might be taken by the House sponsor, even though he is not adept to taking them to give us discretion on the local side. Um, so the League of Cities is also working on the House side to see if we can stall it out. And then the last thing that I wanted to update you on is not coming to light. I believe that was it. Oh, there was the display of flags by governmental entities. I know that flag bill was of some concern early on. It will most likely, um, die this year because none of them have moved in their, uh, committees of reference. So that is it for now. There are some other ones, but I'll send you the update as well as our lobbyist updates from, from week one to this, this week.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make one comment to the commission that's something we might consider. Um, you know, in terms of development, um, and, uh, what this Affordable Housing Act does and the possible impact it would have on our community, it got me thinking about the sustainability of our downtown again. You know, a lot of these buildings are being built and we, we require first-floor commercial space, and the developers are utilizing the first-floor commercial space to remain vacant, or they put, uh, their fitness centers there, or this, not really fulfilling the, the, the vision that we had as a community when we, when we first created the master plan, to try to create a vibrant, walkable, um, environment to... Are we done? Okay. Uh, to create that downtown walkable environment, to get people out of their cars, to try to minimize the traffic, to, to, to make it a sustainable downtown. Because going forward, it's going to be all exciting to move into a new building and, you know, say you live in Flagler Village, but if you have to get into your car to go to a grocery store, to the dry cleaners or whatever, I mean, you don't have a sustainable downtown. It will eventually collapse on its own because no one is going to want to live there. So the state legislature has pretty much taken away from us our ability to require developers to, um, to put these types of amenities in our commercial spaces in these new buildings. And, uh, I don't need to go through the litany of, uh, naming chapter and verse, but I was thinking perhaps we can incentivize, uh, these developers to include a grocery store in their building, or include a dry cleaner, or include these amenities that people normally have to get in their cars to get to. Maybe it'd be a, uh, like a temporary tax abatement, um, or some kind of financial incentive going forward that we could, uh, give the developer so that, so that we can start to populate these, uh, commercial spaces with the types of amenities that we need for the urban dwellers to be able to take advantage of and not have to get into their cars and add to the traffic scene that we already are, you know, concerned about. So it's just, I put that on the table, um, it's something we might think about, maybe at a future conference meeting, we might have a conversation regarding it. But I can see that the developers on their own are not going to do it. An example is when the Society Building was built, the developer, I remember at the groundbreaking, um, I wanted, I reminded him, I said, "Remember, you have 57,000 square feet of commercial space here. Remember you promised us a grocery store." He said, "Don't worry, Mayor, you're going to have your grocery store." And when it was finally built and we did the ribbon cutting, all he did was sell the commercial spaces and all he had is bars and, and restaurants there. So, um, so, you know, shame on me, or shame on us for not having put that into the development agreement, but, you know, you, the developers are only out to make, make money. We fully understand that. But, um, now if we can provide financial incentives, that might be another way for, for this kind of sustainable environment to be created so that we don't have to rely upon the developers, you know, um, the, the developers', uh, willingness to work with us to create what we need to really make, uh, downtown Fort Lauderdale the sustainable place in which to live and work. But I just thought it's something we could consider at our future meeting.
Okay. Um, Mayor, in regards to, um, the developers' agreement, um, the agreement is only as valuable as the commission enforces it.
Right.
We witnessed in District 3 at the time with, um, the building at Sixth Trunk and Seventh Avenue, uh, where Save-A-Lot was, that agreement, the developers' agreement said that would always be a, a supermarket there.
I know.
And that's been changed.
I know.
So what you're saying makes sense, but if the commission is not going to hold fast to it, we need to, we need to be accountable. If we're putting a development agreement in place where we're saying that a grocery store, a dry cleaner, um, whatever we're saying is required in that agreement.
That space.
We cannot roll back from it, commissioned this year, commissioned in the future. And that's what we have witnessed. So I understand what you're saying, but it starts here. If we say that's the fact, we shouldn't roll off of it.
Okay. All right. Moving on to, um, business one, outdoor event presentation. Mr. City Manager, who will be presenting that?
Yeah, so Phil's going to present, um, this as a result of many inquiries about how many events are happening at the beach, also, um, what we charge at the beach. So this can give you an idea overall. We'd like to also, um, explore any consideration for any policy. So Phil, please take it away.
Thank you, City Manager. We're trying to get our PowerPoint up here, I believe. So while they're getting it ready, um, Phil Thornburg, Parks and Recreation. So today's presentation is really two parts. As the commission member remember, a few months ago, you requested that we go out and look at, um, other cities and counties in the, in the area to look at what their, um, revenue side of things are for their special events, how they handle those kind of things. So that will be the first part of the presentation. The second part of the presentation here recently, there's been more discussions about more the barrier island and the amount of events and, um, the, the concerns with, uh, the number and the traffic and, and things like that. So that'll be a second part of the presentation, and then at the end, we would be looking for some, any kind of recommendations that you may have on, on either one of those subjects. So Carl's going to do the first part. Carl is, um, our Deputy Director, Carl Williams. And then I'll follow up with the second part, and then again, our operations staff here. So we do have an operations meeting on our events every Wednesday, so please, fire, transportation ability, parks and rec, everybody sits in those operation meetings along with the promoter. So those individuals are here as well today if you have any specific questions on anything that may take place. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director.
Good afternoon.
As we begin the presentation, uh, just want to make you aware that there are four multi-year agreements that we have in the city. And as you'll see, most of the conversation around today will focus around events, events that we have on the beach. And one particular agreement, uh, is coming up for review. And so any recommendations that you all provide will be sure to update our, our contracts and make sure those go forward. So currently, we, as far as fees that we charge our beach, uh, we have an application fee, which if an individual, uh, event organizer, if you will, is, comes in 60 days or out prior to their event, we charge $200. If they're 59 days and in, it's $1,000. Additionally, when we charge, uh, for specific events, we bill out police, fire, and other city services that are associated with the event. Uh, any repairs, any damages associated with those events, we bill out at cost. It's not a revenue opportunity for the city. So as you'll see, uh, on the presentation, there's only two fees that we assess, which is the application fee and the beach usage fee. The beach usage fee is $500 per day. That is for, um, coming in, um, the break-in, breakout of the event, actual the event itself, for anything on the sand. Now, as we begin to do a little bit of research, we identified eight cities and also used the county as well to review, uh, what their best practices were. And over time, we kind of noticed that everybody really does things differently. There's not really a single, uh, city that really does everything the same way. And so on the, uh, next slide here, you'll kind of see like a little breakout of everything that are possible avenues as far as fees that can be assessed for these outdoor events. Park user fees, fees that you assess for a particular area for use. Uh, other options are, uh, for example, Tortuga, where we have a ticketed event, um, there's a surcharge associated with that. Um, road closures, uh, road user fees, rather, vehicle access passes, those are fees assigned based on the location of where the actual event takes place. And then another interesting option is the trust of special tax, which is where, uh, a, a body is kind of, uh, appointed and they kind of manage the area, uh, for a particular city, which, in this particular presentation, that's Bayfront, which is our city of Miami. And I already mentioned our special, or our application fees as well. So with that being said, at a prior commission meeting, it was mentioned about, uh, these here multi-year agreements and what those agreements entail, how do they go about assessing fees and how do they go about, um, their operational breakout? And one thing that is pretty evident from, uh, our research is, is that they basically all bill out any kind of city services that they have. Now, there are differences as it pertains to how much, um, and how long, and you'll see that, for example, Ultra is probably one of the more popular events in the country, uh, where it's a, a multi-day event as well, and so sustained attendance over the period of about 165,000. And then we go to West Palm Beach, which is Sunfest event, and that one has a sustained attendance of 85,000 over that four-day period. Now, as a comparable, uh, here for us on the beach is Odyssey, where we have a two-day event here on the beach, and we have a sustained attendance of about 50,000 throughout that period.
Tortuga.
What about Tortuga? Yeah.
So Tortuga is another one. Um, we didn't, um, use Tortuga in this particular, uh, one because we thought the comparable was a little bit better for Ultra and Sunfest.
Yeah, but Odyssey has a far smaller participation rate than Odyssey. I, I mean, excuse me. Tortuga has a far greater participation rate than Odyssey. Why wouldn't we, why, that would be more compared, comparable to Ultra or Sunfest, wouldn't it?
So, and, and it could be, but for this particular process, when we look at the, the way that the, uh, tickets are, are done, the outdoor process and the bill outs and things of that nature, we just elected to use Odyssey.
I think we do have to eventually, they'll talk about Tortuga when we talk about events because, um, I know that I've been bringing this up for the last five years and constituents bring it up all the time, that we probably don't do as well in terms of our return on a event like Tortuga, like Miami does with Ultra or, uh, West Palm Beach does with Sunfest. I think that we, we really, um, shortchange ourselves.
Well, and that's actually, uh, my next, uh, mention here on how we can kind of delve into how we can not shortchange ourselves and kind of look at other opportunities to increase revenue, to make it a little bit more palatable for events on the beach. So, um, here you'll see the, uh, I kind of mentioned something, uh, about the surcharge of tickets, um, that, um, Mary mentioned about the, the airshow. And so maybe that's an opportunity to look at, um, adding an additional cost to those tickets. Uh, we can also look at charging full parking rates, uh, and we can also look at having a fee that's an administrative cost, because currently, right now, we do not. And so those are, um, a few of the areas where we can look at as far as increasing revenue for our outdoor events for the city and the beach.
You know, the thing is, you know, Ultra get, Ultra gives a lot of money to, to have its event in Miami, and, um, to some extent, they have to have it in Miami because it's identified, you know? I can't see they're going anywhere else, even though they did come knocking on our door once to relocate up here when there's a lot of trouble they were having trying to, um, trying to keep it in Miami. But, um, but somehow I feel that they have that relationship. I'm not sure that some of these other events have to be in Fort Lauderdale, so we have to be careful about what we charge these people. And I know the Commissioner, uh, is, Commissioner Glassman is saying, you know, we should reassess our relationship with Tortuga, but, you know, Tortuga doesn't have to be in Fort Lauderdale, even though it's a great event and, uh, we, you know, we continue to love to have them here. Um, we do get a surcharge on, uh, for each ticket, I believe that's part of the deal, which is kind of why I wish you would use that in your comparison, because I know we do get a surcharge on each ticket. So, um, uh, but we have to pace ourselves gingerly when we're talking about charging them more money. I know they have a big impact on our beach and the environment, uh, but they've been pretty good tenants for the, uh, or licensees, I guess I should say, for the period of time in which they're on the beach. So, um, but anyway, as you, as we progress forward, we have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, and I think that part of the, the thought process as well is that those fees and part of the reason why cities do things differently is just based on what you said, is that there's a, 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 uh, an analysis done.
A symbiotic relationship.
Correct. There's, there's, there's a benefit, you know, such, such that, but I'll let Phil take it away.
So Mayor, I just want to be clear. So two things. On, on Tortuga, the only difference in Tortuga and Odyssey, which used to be Riptide, is the number of days that would be set up and the show, but they're still only paying $500 a day, so it doesn't matter on the...
Who is only paying? Odyssey is.
Both of them. They're both, they're both...
Oh, Tortuga, yes, I understand that.
Right.
But don't we have a surcharge on the ticket?
No, we don't.
I thought we used to get a dollar.
No. That was discussed...
We don't.
No.
We don't. Just confirm with finance.
That was discussed years ago, but it never, it never was put into place. So there's no, there's no surcharge, and again, the only difference in Tortuga is the number of days, they, they take a little bit longer to set up, and they have a three-day event instead of two, but that's just $500 per day, so there's not a real big difference in those two events. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were...
Well, considering what they charge for tickets, you know, a dollar surcharge by the city is not going to, is not going to, you know, undo the event. I mean, I, I think that should be, that should be examined when we, when we negotiate the next license agreement.
Okay. All right, and I also want to make a note that, you know, this presentation, and Phil's going to kind of talk a little bit more, uh, as we kind of move past the actual fees, but I just want to make it known that, you know, the city has, uh, city of produce events, you know, Fourth of July Great American Beach Party, and then we also have activation, uh, such as like the Riverwalk and On the Loop, and then external outdoor events, which is what we're solely talking about today. And, um, I'll let Phil kind of touch in on the rest.
But before you go there, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Um, I was going to ask, um, the special events on the beach, what is the total number for the year?
That's not a, if you keep going on the back... That's not a, if you keep going on the back, there's a, there's a list of everything. Which page is that on?
Yeah, so that's part of the presentation. If you look at a couple, a couple more.
Page 11?
Pages back. It shows, there's a bar chart.
Shows all the, all the events.
You're going to make me count this, how many? How many?
Lots, lots. Well, some of the events are like, you know, Monday morning, I mean, excuse me, Sunday morning marathons that end at 10 o'clock, you know, they're not like all weekend events. I think you can count on one hand all the, the events that, you know, take up like a full day or a whole weekend. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So this next slide, I just wanted to give you an outline on how we handle the events as they come through our system. So as you know, you see a majority of all the events that come through, and this is just the process that goes through our, our application process all the way through either administratively via provening, proven them, or coming to the commission. On the administrative approvals, that was approved by the commission a few years ago, those are for very minor events in the city. If there's no road closings, no alcohol, nothing like that, then I do at the director's level, have the ability to approve those minor events, so those don't come here, but most of the other ones do. So this is the overlook of the events on the Barrier Island. So we did fiscal year '22, and then we've done fiscal year '23 up through the end of March. So you can see that for the no road closures, not on the sand, in 2022, we had 13 and seven in, so far in 2023. And then on the sand, no road closures, there was nine, and two road closures that were on the sand. And then you can see the same with the road closures, not on the sand and on the sand. And then what we did, we broke that up a little bit more. So the first one shows fiscal year, what we call fiscal year '22, so that would have been from October 1 of '21 through October of '22. So all, those are all the events. We did miss one, the boat show. We forgot that the boat show actually closes the roadway down around the loop to do their load-ins and load-outs. So that one's not on the list, but other than that, I think we caught them all. So this is everything to show you the date, the event, the location, and whether it's on the beach or not on the beach, and then whether there's a road closure or not a road closure. The next list is '23, so that's fiscal year '23, that starts October 1 of '22 to, through the end of March. We haven't added any through there. So that, that shows you that. So a few things that we have already looked at, and the staff, at staff level, we've already started to look at is, one, as Carl mentioned earlier, we have the $201,000 thresholds. What we are really looking to do is maybe up that, ones that are over less than 60 days to maybe $1,500. We're still getting way too many submittals that are less than 60 days, and for us to be able to turn it around with our operations meeting, making sure that everything's in order, and then bringing it to you, still is a tight timeline. So we're trying to do all we can to make sure that they get them in earlier. So we're, we're thinking maybe a little bit more of an application fee, and then those would have to go through the city manager's office to get approval, because we would consider those to be late coming to the commission. The MOT, we just want to make sure we get those in. It is a requirement right now. Sometimes they get them into us and some, before it comes to you, and sometimes they don't. We are thinking that we need, we need to really get those in place and come to you and have the MOT in place before they come to you for final commission approval and review. The third one is something we've talked about here lately is to add additional signage on the beach, at the Barrier Island, coming into the Barrier Island to give more warning early on to that there's something going on and it's going to be congestion, so you may want to take an alternative route. And also the, doing the flyers to the residents like Pride Fest did, and I think, and we did it with St. Pat's too, to, to let the people on the Barrier Island know what's going on. And we would be passing, if it's our event, we'll be doing that in-house. If it's an outside event, we'd be passing those costs on to the promoters to provide that. And then last is, we are starting to work on the idea of having designated routes for runs and walks, and, and different things like that, and we can continue to look at that more. But instead of, I mean, most of the time when a promoter comes in with either a run or a walk or an event, we can kind of steer them down the road if this is what's worked well in the past, but it still takes a lot of time and effort from our police department and our operations team to go through all those. So there is some idea and some discussion about maybe only having two or three or four routes and that they can pick from, and if one's gotten too busy, then, you know, that one come, maybe comes off the table, and if they want to do a run, then there's only a couple routes that they can pick from. So we're, we're trying to look at that as well, to try to not only streamline, but trying to spread out and, and have these operations in order. So with that, that's the end of our presentation. And what we're really looking for is if there's any interest in the first part and any, any kind of revenue ideas on what you'd like us to start implementing on the revenue side of things, and then if there's any recommendations on how you want to start entertaining any kind of control of the items on the Barrier Island.
Mayor, if I could, Dwayne Spencer, City Attorney, just to provide a little guidance with regards to the fee structure, there are two different aspects that have been mentioned in this application, particularly with regards to our neighboring cities and what they have done. The large fees that you see charged with regards to Miami and West Palm Beach are in the nature of a license or a user fee, whereas our application fees are regulatory fees that have to be tied to the actual costs of regulating the activities. So in our discussion, we would have to consider and separate, we talk about as an application fee and the license fee with regards to the use of public property. So those license and user fees would not be applicable to large-scale events on private property, but they would be subject to our regulatory fees, our application fees.
Right, but if they're using the beach, that's public property.
That's correct.
Right.
And so we could, and.
So we could charge some, we can charge in the nature of a user fee on anything that's on the beach?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Or any of our parks?
That is also correct.
Okay. We have a few people signed up to speak. Do you want to hold comments until after the few people have spoken? Okay. Thank you, Phil, thank you, sir. So there's a few people that signed up to speak. I'll call you three at a time, so you be prepared to stand up and speak. I'll give you a couple minutes. Rodney Fenstermacher, Bill Brown, and Elizabeth George. Is Rodney here? Hey Rodney, come on up here. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
You did.
I studied hieroglyphics in high school. Please step up, give you a couple minutes. Go ahead.
Rodney Fenstermacher, 3037 Harvard Drive, Fort Lauderdale. We have, our family's been here for 60 years, we're one block from the beach, and I agree with what Commissioner Glassman said earlier, it's not so much disliking the events, it's the management of them, and especially with the amount of construction at the moment. I will just give you the example, we have to, from Harvard Drive, walk up A1A between Bahia Mar and the beach. Both are closed when there's an event, and we may go up in the morning and be able to walk, and when we turn around to come home, it's closed. And we will say to them, the city is assured as there's going to be a safe passageway, and they will say, we don't work for the city, walk in the street. So my 84-year-old wife has to walk and has walked on A1A until there's barricades and there's a lack of communication, because what also happens is we may be able to walk up there and we come back, like when you put the special aisle on A1A. They were tearing it down, but the beach was not open, and I said, guys, you're taking it down, beach is not open, and I got, ah, we're just doing what we're told. So there's not a communication, so it's not the event. It's, as Commissioner Glassman said, it's the management and the attitude. I'm really worried about what's going to happen with Tortuga, because they have already put the fence up to A1A. They're letting us walk along the beach at the moment, but they're not going to do that the whole time, and I'm not seeing where there's any safe passage being, and the communication. We don't know when these events happen. All of a sudden, we get there and there's an event, and we do not know how they're going to manage this, and it's a safety concern. I see baby strollers going down A1A, older people like us going down there. So the concern is communication and management.
Okay, thank you. Bill Brown, followed by Elizabeth George, followed by Bill Brown again. I guess that was for business too. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Commission, Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Alliance. You're correct. The problem is failure to manage these events. However, the Central Beach Alliance and its residents support and understand the importance of having special events within our city. We are a growing city, and any city that has growth has to provide events that make it vibrant for the residents to be part of the community and get out and participate in. But today's the day for a change, okay? In, in your, there's two issues, as I mentioned, and you just briefly heard, is the management of the events and then the process. And you have to separate those two. And it does need a complete overhaul, the process, and reviewing the fees. Some of the suggestions that the Parks Director made are good, but perhaps Parks is not the best department to facilitate this. And why I say this is, it is, it's a coordination of all agencies, police, fire, Public Works, if it's on the beach, Parks Department. But if you're going to have a major event, it's an, it's an event, it's an incident. If you have 30, 35,000 people on the beach, or is an incident within an incident, has the highest risk occur? What I mean by an incident within an event, an incident within, an incident is, okay, the incident of the event is Tortuga, but what happens if we have a severe weather event that comes through and you have to evacuate? So I maybe propose looking at, maybe emergency management might be the best coordinating agency to manage these events under a unified command system and coordinate with all the multidisciplined jurisdictions that coordinates these events through an event action plan. And then as far as the process and the fees, and we all know the issues, and I'm going to have the Vice President of Central Beach talk about those issues on behalf of the CBA, but I would like for, and you're not going to solve this today. It's going to take some in-depth discussions on the process side and the management side.
But I think your comment has great merit to have a central coordinator to, can be an interdisciplinary coordinator with all the different disciplines, police, fire, parks.
Public Works.
Public Works, because when you think about it, everything is all involved. How are we doing it now? Is it just Phil, you're, it's all thrown on your shoulders? And you throw it on his shoulders? Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Elizabeth George, followed by Mary Pellequin, followed by John Burns.
Hello.
Hi there.
I'm Elizabeth George. I live at the Port of Fino, and I'm also the Vice President of the Central Beach Alliance. So first, I want to say thank you very much to all of you for letting us be here today to talk about this. I also want to thank the city manager and his team for all the hard work that they have been doing to come up with ideas. But I want to share with you some of the concerns that I have that are not just during events, but they're all the time. I live right on the beach. I love it. I love the events. I love being there. It's exciting to live there. But some of the concerns that we're being faced with that are only exacerbated during the special events or during spring break, which I know is your next topic, are, we have delivery trucks blocking half the street almost all day at Cortez and at Seabreeze. We have construction that's going on everywhere, met, that continuously is blocking the streets, even though they say they're not. We have drivers that don't even know how to drive in Fort Lauderdale, because it's evident that they don't know what a red light is, they don't know what a stop sign is, they don't know what one-way streets are, driving up the wrong way. And this has really been exacerbated by the, the construction with the Marina, because we have roads that used to be two-way roads that are now one-way.
Or no way.
Or no way at all, exactly. The rideshare and the taxis are constantly stopping and dropping people off, and then we have all the nighttime racing that's going on on the streets as well. I think with regards to special events, there's a lot of confusion that people have as to what are the different types of events that are going on. The site plans don't seem to include road access and impact road closures. Transportation plans, at least my understanding, and I haven't been on the events activities a lot yet, but there's requirements with regards to how many participants are there when there's really a transportation plan. The calendar of events don't seem to clearly reflect all of the events. Repeat events don't seem to get the same level of scrutiny. Traffic management is done by those poor volunteers that are out there that everybody ignores. And I think that, you know, code enforcement is a big challenge. And then lastly, I'd like to just bring up a couple things with regards to Tortuga. I know it says there's no road closure, but I'm sorry, most of the beach is blocked off for multiple weeks, the parking is blocked, so all those people that think they can go down there to park to go to the beach don't have a place to go. And then when the event is over, the en masse leaving is crazy. It's, the roads are blocked. I myself have been at that event, and I myself, with everyone else, walked down, all the way down to the Ritz Carlton, blocking the traffic. So I think it's important that we look at those things. And so that's it. I know I went way over my time, but thank you.
It's okay. Nice seeing you. Mary, followed by John Burns, followed by Kevin Regan, Reagan. Hello, Mary.
Hi there. I'm Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mary Pellequin. I'm the President of the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations and a Board Member of Coral Ridge where I live. I'm really speaking on behalf of myself. I like all the special events. I counted right before I came here, I actually have 10 half-marathon medals myself, which kind of surprised me. And I love the airshow. I don't care about Tortuga, because I can really hardly stand country music, but that's just me. But I want to point out that even though it really does affect the people that live on the beach, these events also affect the other neighborhoods. Now, we're about to have the airshow, which I love, I love seeing it from my own backyard, but A1A closes, I don't know, for about a week or so, if not more, and that means all that A1A traffic now is on Bayview Drive, which is already busy. We, if you live in Coral Ridge, we know this is going to happen. So, you know, we've learned to live with that. Having said that, these other special events that happen during spring break, like the marathon, now the day of the marathon, I was in a swim meet at the Aquatic Center, and I, I knew I was not going to be able to drive to the Aquatic Center. So I got my swim gear, put it in a backpack, and walked the two and a half miles to the Aquatic Center. This is good for me, and, but it was like the perfect storm, is I'm walking out onto Bayview Drive, and I don't live that far from Sunrise, I realize Bayview Drive's all backed up. I get to Sunrise, it's all backed up as far as I can see, and there's some like massive barge with cranes on it going down the inner coastal that opened the bridge when it wasn't supposed to be open and took forever to go through. Now, I don't think anybody would know this was going to happen, you know, certainly nobody knew this was going to happen, but it, right from the get-go from that, I mean, I was delayed because I couldn't go across the bridge. Walking up the, the, A1A was, it was like a circus, and I made it there, but then there's a point where there's road construction on Seabreeze Boulevard, kind of in front of the Hall of Fame, but it also closed lanes on the north side of Los Olas. So now you've got the one road people can go on down to one lane, I look over, the Los Olas Bridge is up, because guess what? That same barge is going through, and it's just, it's just like, it's just a crazy mess. Now again, a couple of these things, nobody would know about the road construction, I don't even know who it was, I'm usually pretty aware of all that, I don't know if it was FDOT or what, nobody would really know about the barge, I'm assuming, but it's like a perfect storm of just a traffic nightmare that went far beyond the beach, it went way back into the neighborhoods. I heard about it later in the day, how, you know, middle. I heard about it later in the day, how, you know, Middle River Drive, how how federal highway, it really did affect a lot of areas. So I think we have to be mindful when we when we have these events of these like crazy things that can happen, and let's please not have them during spring break. Please, the marathon could be earlier, it could be in January. You know, spring break starts later. Let's not have, I know the St. Patrick's Day Parade was probably like a one-off, but really right in the heart of spring break. I mean, I drive up and down that street all the time to go to the pool. And I will say the police did an excellent job, the city workers cleaning up stuff. But, you know, to have these big events at the same time is just, I just don't think it's very smart. So that's what I have to say about special events. I like them, but they have their place. Two other things, we have a coyote in Coral Ridge. I see it at night when I'm out walking. And twice I've seen them with a big iguana in their mouth, so I like them. I don't complain about them. I don't really even tell anybody it's there because I don't want somebody to come take it away. And secondly, I really love the new magazine that the city put out. I really appreciate that. It takes all those emails we get with all the special events or all the things that are happening in the parks and and everywhere and puts them in one place, and I really appreciate that. I hope we keep doing that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Would have been quicker if you swam your way to the Aquatic Center. Would have been quicker if you swam your way to the Aquatic Center.
I can't swim that well.
Yeah.
Great. I'm John Burns. I'm the President of the Venetian condominium at One La Solis Circle. One of our concerns is the coordination, particularly with multiple events. When you have something like the art show going on at one end of La Solis, then you have a big event at the other end of La Solis, particularly the art show closes down Cooley Hammock Streets. So even though those are some cut-through streets, but the coordination between those those events. Then you've got things like you've heard about already today with the Seabreeze, the National Hockey League that closed down the pedestrian access. Now, several weeks later, we've got Tortuga, we still don't have a real good resolution. Then this year, we've had three really big events on the beach, Pride, St. Pat's, and the Humana Dog Walk. Those are all big Saturday events. And then on Sunday, we close down the streets again for a running running-a-thon. So it's like the whole weekend is tough. With road closures and blockages, again, the detour signs that we use just aren't working. The electronic sign that's on La Solis right now that says, use the Birch Avenue entrance for the garage, says that all day long and all weekend long. It's not changed, it's not updated, even when La Solis Circle is open. Again, there's a lot of loading in and loading out issues. They block lanes. Sea Class in particular blocked A1A. St. Pat's blocked La Solis Circle. And a lot of that was just the volunteers helping the helping to set up the event. They weren't using the garage. We're doing a lot of stuff in the Inner Coastal Park. It's great. But when you have big pedestrian groups that walk from the Inner Coastal Park to the beach, it closes major arteries. It closes La Solis Circle. It closes La Solis Boulevard. It closes Seabreeze. It closes A1A. You can't go north, you can't go south. It's a real problem. Particularly when the Festival Street is closed, you close down the two eastbound lanes of La Solis Boulevard, it narrows to one. And then when you get to Seabreeze, where all the traffic has to turn right, you've got pedestrians fighting across, you've got cars fighting to turn right. We'll give the boat show credit. When they close down La Solis Circle for their load-in, load-out, they have an officer in the street, it's out of the car, helping traffic. Again, on the data, I do have some concerns on the data that was presented because in the 2022 data, the Great American Beach Party in the Fourth of July wasn't on there. The 2023 data, the National Hockey League wasn't in there, that was in January. So it would be nice if these applications were somehow accessible by the public. If you've missed the events meeting, you I haven't learned how to dig into where that data is kept. So you can learn the name of the sponsors, you can see the detail on what they're doing. You can't find that if you don't go to the events meeting.
So maybe you can talk to Phil. He can probably show you how to do that. But your 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 building is like, I know, it's like it's you're like in Grand Central Station there. So and and because of the 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 all the construction on the north side of the bridge, it just complicates things worse.
Well, we we keep talking to Sun Tech about opening Birch Road. I mean, we we close these streets down very easily, not understanding where the heck the traffic is going to go.
And La Solis Circle, I mean.
It's it's not just us, it's going to North Beach.
You can't get to the garage like you used to be able to.
And we do pedestrian control for spring break, where we we put the barricades up. You might want to consider putting those barricades all the way from the south, from the beach park, from the actual event site, and make people walk behind the barricades because right now they just take over the whole street.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, anybody else want to speak on this issue? Okay. Wrap it up, Kevin.
Oh, Kevin Regan.
Oh, we have one more behind you. Okay, yes, Mr. Regan.
Hi, my name is Kevin Regan. I live at Villa Madrid, which is on Harbor Drive, one block from the beach. And most of the area south and west of the beach of the park is zoned residential. And while many of the events are not a problem, some of them are so loud that it is maddening for those of us who live there. I have clocked seventy-plus decibels from some of the concerts at my front door. A couple of weeks ago, there was an acid rock concert. So it's it's very difficult to live in that area because of this noise. And it's not just the noise on the day of the concert. I made a recording the other day. I'd like to just play very briefly. That's not coming through. This is this is what we listen to for two weeks before an event while they erect the concerts. And then for two weeks afterwards, while they take it down. So that I go to bed at night with that beep, beep, beep stuck in my head. So our, in my neighborhood, our main concern is the noise. I'm also kind of surprised to learn that the city only gets $500 a day for this. I spend that much personally for my family to try to get out of town during the events. Thank you.
And Jackie Scott.
Thank you, thank you. I have something I'd like you to look at as I'm speaking. David's going to pass it out. I really want to take the opportunity.
Statue of David?
Pardon me? Statue of David, yes. Except it's ambulatory, amazingly, isn't it? I want to take this opportunity, y'all, to talk about traffic in Cooley Hammock. And I want to specifically talk about the La Solis mobility in the 15th Avenue corridor.
And this relates to beach events?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Because people have to, people leave, everybody complains about being stuck, and I want to talk about this for just a minute.
Okay.
When people, right now, you've already approved, and I think last commission meeting was a presentation about the dual left turns at La Solis and 15th Avenue. We are desperately waiting for the dual left turns at Broward. And if you look at the sheet in front of you, look at the bottom, that that shows 15th Avenue, two lanes that exist today. If both of those lanes had dual left, we would move so many more cars, I can't even tell you. That lane typically is empty. But if we can get this done, it's going to have a huge impact on everybody.
So you're saying that right turn lane is very rarely used?
Very rarely used. I mean, I can take pictures and text you.
They just go up 16th Avenue instead if they want to?
Well, yeah, they do. They use 16th Avenue. That's why the turn on, that's why the turn westbound on 15th is so important.
Right.
That's one issue. So I hope that we continue to move forward and get that accomplished because it's going to be good for the entire city.
These are both 15th, right?
Yes, one shows the La Solis. That's correct. And La Solis, you've we've already gotten done. We need that, we need that westbound turn from 15th to be dual. Secondly, during events, it should be almost, it should be mandatory on these large events that we have people manning the signal lights at 15th at both ends to help facilitate traffic flow. Thirdly, no matter what you do, we are always going to have a buildup of traffic. Even if 15th runs smoothly, the minute you get on Broward Boulevard, you get trapped by the light at 8th and trapped by the the light at US1. So people have got to get used to living in an urban area with events. It's going to be inconvenient. Number three, which I think is critically important, is regarding the tunnel that's been proposed by the Boring Company. Here is an example of an opportunity as a city. If they are willing to pay the cost of doing that tunnel and use us as a showcase, it is absurd that we would not take advantage of that. We're talking about traffic, we talk about the issues, and here's another way of people coming from all over to come to beach events, another way to get there other than clog our streets. So I hope that you all continue to move forward on that because it's a step in the right direction. It's progressive. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, there being none, anyone from the commission would like to discuss the item. Why don't we start with the Beach Commissioner, Commissioner Glassman?
There's two of us that are Beach Commissioners.
There were actually three.
There's three of us, thank you.
Yes, but I'll take it anyway. Thank you. I'll take, yeah.
Sorry.
I'll take it. No, that's okay. That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. And first of all, thank you very much to the residents that came and spoke. I know that we've been talking about this a lot as a commission. I typically bring it up whenever we have these events. And I really hope that staff has taken extensive notes and goes back and watches the video because I think that every single point that was made is so valuable, and we really do need to see changes made. And as people spoke today, this really is about the management, the coordination, the communication, how many of our staff departments are involved in in this endeavor. And I and I do believe we need to have a total overhaul from top to bottom. I I just think that we have to start really, especially as we continue to have these events and construction continues on the Barrier Island, we have to figure out a way to make sure that what we've heard today is just not going to be repeated. So I want to just go over a couple of little points that were not made today. I'm not going to repeat everything that was said today because they're all excellent, and we've heard that. But last night at my pre-agenda meeting, we also had a discussion about trying to coordinate more with the Coast Guard with regards to the bridges. For instance, it was brought to my attention from the Marine Industries that there was a requirement of 60 days' advance notice for bridge closures to happen in our city. And those should have been approved in advance. And yet, the marine industry finds out about things just not enough time in advance, and they don't really know when bridges are going to be locked up. And we need to coordinate that a little bit better as well. I've also been told that although people see a really big increase in improvement with regards to monitoring of traffic before, during, and especially after events, both north and south of La Solis Boulevard, it seems that people, for some reason, seem to pay more attention when they actually see a police officer in uniform on the corners as opposed to some of the volunteers. So that seems to get a little bit more traction, and I think that we need to think about that as well. I will reiterate that I agree with others that spoke. I think we really have to look at our fee structure, whether it's license fee, user fee, whatever category you want to talk about. Again, as I said earlier, I just don't think that we are getting the dollars that we should be getting in comparison to what other cities get. We do have to just make sure that we're dealing with the bridge. I agree with what John Burns said about the signage. People just don't know how to get to the garage. It's just really too difficult for people to park in that big, new, beautiful garage, where the lights don't work on the outside, I might add. But that's a whole nother issue. But we have got to figure out a way to move people onto the Barrier Island, move them when they're on the Barrier Island, and move them when they're leaving the Barrier Island. But especially what was said about the sign. I see that sign, it's confusing, and we don't know when La Solis Circle is open or when it's closed. So we just have to do a better job. Overall, Mayor, I think that everything else has been said. I don't need to repeat it. I'm really glad that we had this agenda item today, discuss it. And and I'm really looking forward to being able to improve, especially what was said about how people can walk and navigate on A1A. I know right now it's very difficult outside Bahia Mar because we're in that first phase of building that Marina marketplace along A1A. Very difficult to navigate that particular area from Bahia Mar south on A1A. So again, I look forward to seeing what happens. City Manager, we've been talking months and months and months and months. I feel like a broken record at every commission meeting when I pull the event items to talk about these exact issues. So now that we have all of these suggestions, we have emails on the record, I'm really looking forward to seeing plans, again, not just for traffic or emergency management, but also overall coordination. Also, as was mentioned, we should really try to figure out when we have events on La Solis, maybe we don't need to have them on the Barrier Island. Or when spring break is here, we don't need to go crazy. I will say that I had a very long and incomprehensive list. Thank you, Phil. I think the baby shower on the top of the garage was not a problem this past year. So if we can just encourage more events like that baby shower, I think I think that we're really headed in the right direction. That's just a little tongue-in-cheek, Mayor. But I I think everyone understands what we're facing, and I think we can get there. We have to get there because right now it's way too helter-skelter. So thank you, City Manager, for putting that plan together and putting a team together. And if you ever find it necessary to bring in some of the residents to have a conversation or a meeting, by all means, they live it every day, they live at every event. They really are the experts, they're the eyes and the ears on the ground for when these events happen, and I think that their suggestions are excellent, and we really should take advantage of their wisdom and their knowledge. Thank you.
I just want to correct you. I think the crying from the babies exceeded the decibel level for the area, so I'm not sure it's a permitted use in the future.
Well, actually, Mayor, just so you know, that's a planned resort development area, and the decibel level is much higher. It's allowed to be much higher in a PRD than it is in the other zoning around that area. So I would take exception to that decibel level.
Okay, well, I stand corrected.
You're right.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Okay, a few things. A lot of it was was touched upon already. And I love showcasing our city. I love having events. I love being able to brag about it to the whole neighborhood, not just the district or the city, but the county that comes here for a lot of these events. And it's but if it's a pendulum, in recent years, the size, scope, duration of these events are have grown exponentially, and it's placing a really unfair burden on residents of my district as well as district that's represented by Steve and John. I think we have to look at a few things. Again, a lot of these were discussed, and these were broken down into multi-year events, the big multi-year. But I think we maybe have to limit or space out better the events that have the biggest burden on our the residents that live there. Not always looking at not only the multi-year, but looking at the time of the actual event itself, also looking at the time that it's closed, not just the beach, but the surrounding areas, the extent geographically, you know, grouping them differently. And what was pointed out today, one other thing that that actually was a very good point, was made earlier by one of the residents in my district, the noise, the effect noise has on the neighborhoods. Somebody mentioned maybe having one point of contact for the community, that each event will have somebody that if, you know, what road is closed, having the beach versus a sidewalk available, that they could communicate better. One of the things that was touched upon by one of the people that spoke was maybe getting disaster preparedness, search team or involved in in the process, using it sort of like we did in the past as a drill for disaster, getting them involved with crowd control. One of the people mentioned 15th Street came up and gave a presentation getting on and off the beach. I don't know if if police has that already, but having a an officer on both ends of 15th Street to helping traffic getting on and off, especially, let's say, fire rescue communicates if there's an emergency that have to come off, they could direct traffic to make transport to Broward General or whatever hospital quicker. We need, it was touched upon already, some things that would have brought up, again, what we need to charge for these events has to be a lot more in line. Not that it's money-making, it's not that we're trying to make money off of these events. But if they are going to have a private promoter that's going to be using our beach, we want to make sure that that it's not having an unfair financial burden on our city, and we're recouping our costs. The number and and size of the outdoor events, something we have to deal with, the traffic impact, not just roads closed, but if lanes are closed, then they might say this road is closed, and if there's a lane open, it might not be mentioned. But the lanes that are closed have an impact on on the traffic. And also the environmental, you know, aspects, cleanup, setup, you know, cars idling. Can I just have Phil up here just for a quick, for a moment, if you can? Parks, Phil?
Phil, can you come up? Phil, can you come up? Phil?
Just, I mean, just to categorize, major for minor, I mean, I think the biggest events we have, I know there's Tortuga Air Show, July 4th, Beach Party, St. Pat's, Spring Break. Is that like any other major, multi-day, huge impact events?
Well, we would consider the Boat Show a major one.
A Boat Show, okay.
Depending on the Pride Fest, on how big it is, it was not as big this year.
Right.
Typically, the major events are...
The Great American Beach Party is a big crowd.
Yeah, I got that. I got that now.
Yeah, so usually, we usually consider if it's over 5,000, then that would be considered a large-scale event.
And how about days? How many days is the beach consumed? In other words, for setup, not just the event itself, but how many days?
Well, everyone, everyone's different.
But the Tortuga would be the biggest, longest duration?
Well, probably the Boat Show in Tortuga. But it's, I mean, everyone's different, and with the large agreements, they have their own separate agreement that comes through the commission. That outlines not only the event days and hours, but also has an escrow attached to it. But again, all those would come to the commission, and it actually shows the days and times for all that.
I mean, I would say we're saturated in the number, I mean, events of this size, I think we're already saturated, there's no, and then the smaller ones like volleyball, mini golf, La Solas Art Festival, little things like that that aren't to the same extent. But it seems that we're oversaturated with the number of events, given the number of days that public access...
I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. I guess I would say, and as, you know, we've had this discussion before, and we're still bringing new events to the city, so if the desire is that we don't do anymore, and what we have is what we have, or we want to reduce what we already have now, then, you know, we would need, whether it's to the City Manager, somehow to figure out what those events will be, and not at staff level. Right now, we bring every event to you for your review, so we don't have any guidelines in place on how many we do a month, or how many a year, or anything like that. We vet it through the operations committee, get it as tight as we can get it, and then we bring it to you for a final decision.
And I think what we're probably doing already, and I encourage us to continue to focus on this, is minimizing the amount of time that public access is sacrificed for the event, the geography, keeping that, I mean, if you have an event, do you not have to close the whole beach, you know, maybe trying to maybe close in section, and the traffic, obviously, is a big thing too. Thank you so much.
Yeah, but I can, you know, if you take Tortuga, for example, we've had that discussion before about the number of days that they're there, and they will tell you, and I tend to believe them, that the equipment and the people down there cost them a lot of money, so they try to tighten it up as much as they can. Their desire would be to work 24/7. The challenge is you've got noise, right, and you had the gentleman come up with the backup beepers, so we don't let them start until, you know, 7:00, 8:00 in the morning, and then they have to be done by 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night. So that's what requires them to spread out the days. They could probably do it in a third of the time, but then you're going to have those backup beepers going all night long, and you don't want that. So again, it's a challenge, and I understand the challenges, but events like that, and mostly when they shut off, you know, and to some of the discussion earlier, the challenge too is with them setting up and where they're located within the lot, the safety of patrons walking through their event site, and you have these large, very large pieces of equipment, and they may or may not be able to see pedestrians. So at some point, they do have to shut off that sidewalk, and there's no sidewalk that goes along A-1A on the east side, so you push them to the west side, right? All right, and then, as you just mentioned, now we have the construction going on on the west side, so we have to reduce A-1A southbound by one lane in order to get the pedestrians going back and forth. So it's, as mentioned earlier, there's a lot of stuff involved, and staff and the operations group does the best it can with everything that's happening, but it is a challenge.
And I think some oversight with point of contact for communication for the things that you said, people that are going to have to walk back and forth, so make it as easy and convenient for people to, you know, one, two clicks away, find out what street is open, what sidewalk, if they have to go east-west, and again, if they're not communicating, and the sidewalk's closed, the beach is closed, make sure there's better communication so, you know, there is access, maximum access for the residents that do live around there. That's my thought. Phil, thank you very much.
Phil, hold on, I have two quick questions.
Wait a minute, has the Vice Mayor finished? Are you finished?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Is it possible for us, or not, to actually charge different fee structures for profit versus not-for-profit event people?
I would say that's probably more of an attorney question. I can tell you that when we first, when I first started with the events, we only allowed not-for-profits to hold events. The challenge was the for-profits found a not-for-profit to apply on their behalf, maybe give them something, maybe not, for their trouble. So you really, it wasn't serving the purpose that it was intended for, and so that, it's probably been 10 or 15 years ago now, we got rid of that, you had to be a not-for-profit to apply for an event, and that's when we went to just, you know, whether it didn't matter either way. So I know that's been discussed, my concern would be, they'll probably figure out a way around it, and they'll find somebody that will say, you know, "Apply on my behalf", and then it is what it is.
Okay, I was just wondering about that also. Secondly, I know John had requested, is it possible for us to post the app, I know applications are in the backup when it comes to the commission, and you can see it, but for some people, that might be a little bit too late. Is it possible that when committees meet to, you know, the events committee meets to see everything, are we able to post all of the details and applications for all the events that are applied for?
We could work on that. We could work on that.
So people can see all of that detail?
Yeah, that is, as we receive them. I think the major takeaway is all your comments. We're going to put all these together and come up with a master plan to present for you all to adopt.
And then even maybe when we look at the applications themselves, maybe we need to get into more detail and specificity with regards to, you know, MOT, show us how traffic's going to move, getting to the Barrier Island, while on the Barrier Island, when you leave the Barrier Island. Let's get really into the weeds on making sure that those plans are fleshed out, and that people can get a real handle on how is all of this going to work. Thanks.
Will do.
Thank you, Phil.
Commissioner Herbst, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've heard, as have many others, some of the complaints from residents that are trapped either on or off the island, trying to get back. I am very well aware that these are significant economic engines for the city and have been. We worked very hard trying to get some of these events, like Tortuga, up off the ground to get the air show back after many years of not having it. So I'm appreciative of what those events do for the city, but I also would agree that the number and frequency of them certainly have an impact on the quality of life of the people who live and visit the beach. So I do think we need to be mindful of just how many events we're doing out there. Secondly, I also think it's important for us to look at some of these events and think about, as we've talked about, how much we're charging for them to utilize our beach and put on something which is basically a for-profit business at our locations. There are some events that we do, again, I'll use the air show, as being what I would call more resident and family-friendly, so you can bring your kids to the beach, and you don't have to set up in an area that where you are required to buy a ticket in order to enjoy the air show. It basically covers everything from Hollywood up through Pompano, and everybody that goes to the beach can sit there, enjoy that for free, and take advantage of that. Some of these other events that are in segregated sections of the beach that are ticketed and so forth, don't provide that same benefit to our community. They have a burden, but they don't provide the benefit. Some of the businesses at the beach have told me that they appreciate having these events there, others have told me actually that their businesses are negatively impacted because they don't get the regular flow of customers that they would normally get. People aren't going to come out to the beach to go to a restaurant when there's that much traffic out there. So I think, I think the impact on some of the businesses is mixed. I know the hoteliers like it because it fills rooms, puts heads in beds, but I don't know that the, you know, that the appreciation is uniform across the board. So I do think it would be appropriate to figure out a methodology for charging some of these large events like a Tortuga, a more reasonable fee. We may not get the $2 million that they get for Ultra down in Miami, but I certainly think it needs to be significantly higher than what we're paying right now. Again, in the early days, when we were trying to nurture this event, it made more sense for us to keep the barrier to entry as low as possible for them. I think we're past that point. I think this is, you know, now a significant event on their concert schedule, and I think charging a more appropriate license fee as opposed to a user fee, I think makes a lot of sense, but I do think we need to look at the totality of the impact.
Yeah, significantly, I think, and it wouldn't be a burden on them either. It's not going to be a prohibition or any kind of inconvenience for them, even if we tack the dollar or two as a, as part of a licensing fee arrangement. But I agree with you 100% because the impact on our beach and natural resources can't always be calculated from year to year. It's a cumulative impact, and as we need to restore our beaches and to, you know, make them, you know, maintain their suitability and sustainability, you know, it becomes a financial burden on the taxpayers. So I think your point is well-taken and something we should consider going forward. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes, I'm in agreement with the majority of what my colleagues have said. I'm just overwhelmed at the frequency of how many events there is. I asked a question, so I counted it out myself. Actually, there are 54 events that are listed here, and there's only how many weeks in a year? Okay, so we're really overextending the use of the beach. I think that we should be able to have a conversation to see how we could be able to provide a service but also preserve our beach. This is a lot of activity on the beach, and I agree that the fee, the licensing, that should be considered. I think it's a low amount that's being suggested, so that's my stance on it.
Okay. So where do we go from here? You know, obviously, I think, you know, Phil's point is properly taken, which is to say, you know, the commission ultimately makes the decisions on what goes on in the beach. This year, we did add the St. Patrick's Day Parade and Festival, which I think kind of pushed everybody beyond the bounds of tolerance. While it was a great event, everybody loved it, you know, being there on the beach and by the ocean, and it was a gorgeous day, and everything all worked out beautifully, but again, it has the impact on the community, and I personally would prefer it, goes back to where it was originally. Hopefully, hopefully by this time next year, the tunnel top will be finished, but, you know, we need to spread these events around the city, and having the St. Patrick's Day Festival and Parade on La Solas and around the Heisinger Park area has always been a winner for the city. So, you know, in response to what Commissioner Beasley-Pitman has said, we really need to start figuring out other ways to celebrate the great resources we have here in our city by not depending upon the beach as the sole place for all these events to take place. Okay, so moving on, onto business two, I guess that is a good segue.
Yeah, so this is another topic. I guess Fort Lauderdale Beach is in demand, and again, we want to talk about lessons learned, the experience, and also considerations for next year. So Chief Lynn will lead the discussion.
Good afternoon again. I will be the first presenter briefly, and then after this...
Can I just say something, Chief?
Yes, sir.
I've never received so many compliments as I have this year on how well spring break was undertaken and managed by your department. So congratulations to the Fort Lauderdale Police Department.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that, Mayor. The two people most responsible in the back, Captain Hart and Sergeant Monica Ferrera, done an excellent job.
Hats off to both of you.
Along with the...
I saw the whip in the back pocket there. Keep those spring breakers in place, right?
We listen to the captain, but what Monica says is what happens.
And Chief, are you ready next year for the coyote run?
We're ready.
Are you ready for the coyote run?
We're ready.
I can't wait.
And I also would like to say, there's also a team effort, not just within the Police Department, with Phil, these people did a tremendous job for us with TAM, and along with Fire Department also, so it was a big team effort, so we appreciate what they all did too. So with that said, some brief numbers for spring break. I'll need my glasses for this. So hopefully everyone can see the chart up there for the police personnel impact. We have a breakdown of some of the expenses, but essentially, our total estimated cost were $834,000, a little over that. The primary bulk of that would be overtime for the officers involved. So with the traffic issues that we just discussed, we had one motorcycle accident that involved one of our police officers, who was attempting to catch a person who was possibly a DUI driver, start the curb, and the officer was injured. Thankfully, not serious injuries, and will recuperate and be able to return to work. Pedestrian accidents on the beach, none. Loud noise complaints, there was no shortage of loud noise complaints, as we've discussed, there's been issues, but none of them exceeded the decibel level that I'm aware of. Traffic citations, we issued 2,199, and traffic-related arrests were three. So with this total cost of $834,000, as mentioned there, there are also costs that will come down the road from possibly some court time, from depositions for officers involved and the things that happened on the beach. I know there was some discussion about, a concern about suicides on the beach. We had one person that was repeat, repeatedly, three occasions, was on the rooftop of a parking garage in a different building threatening to jump. We think we've addressed that issue, though. So with that said, if there are any other questions with the Police Department, I'm also very happy with the way things went this year. The officers told me that the students that were down were very polite, cooperative, and respectful, even thanking them for their service, which was very nice here. On many occasions, when we had to close the beach for the cleanup, they began leaving on their own, so that was great for us too. So if there are no questions of me, I'm going to invite the Fire Chief up to briefly go through his presentation as soon.
While he's walking up there, what kind of traffic citations were being issued?
We had a group of officers stationed in front of the beach place, and whatever would arise, they would address it. So we'd run the gamut of speeding...
So that's a lot of citations, 2,200, you know?
Yes, yes.
Were they speeding, were they...
I think it ran up to full spectrum of hypotheses.
...in the middle of the road, and tent on their front windshield, two of the main ones, and then we were all pulled over on first stop sign.
Can you come up and repeat that so we... The rest of the world could see?
I, majority were rideshare, stopping in the middle of the roadway and letting spring breakers out of their vehicles, as well as tent was a big one. Loud exhaust, so the loud altered pipes, and then also, we also hit birch a lot with all the stop signs, people running stop signs.
So people with loud exhaust, you were citing? Okay.
You like to...
Well, we hear a lot of complaints from that, so... Hi, Chief.
Hello again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Steve Golden, Fire Chief. So our story is very similar to PD's. During the month of March, in response to spring break on the beach, we deployed two additional assets, which consisted of two carts. The reason why we used the smaller vehicles is so that we can navigate some of the traffic concerns that we have in the area, as well as getting on and off the beach relatively easy. The two carts, the first cart was deployed from 12 to 7 each day, and the second cart went from 2:00 in the afternoon till 10:00 PM each day, with an overlaying of one at Cortez Street thereabouts, and the other one being down at the La Solas Park. The advantage of these carts were they were able to get in and out quickly to answer any responses, whether they were medical or a fire alarm, and then transport those individuals to a drop-off point that was normally the fire station, Fire Station 49 at 1015 Seabreeze Boulevard. We also deployed additional lifeguard personnel at the stations at each lifeguard tower in the area where we're seeing a more dense response on the beach, as well as we also had a lifeguard on a watercraft, a jet ski, that was offshore to respond to anyone that was possibly in need as they swam out to the buoys. Our total operating cost over that timeframe was just under $85,000. We also highlighted in our report some of our key target areas, with Rock Bar being the number-one location for our call response, La Solas Oceanside Park, the Doubletree Hotel located at 801 Seabreeze, the Conrad at 551 North Fort Lauderdale Beach, and the Weston on... on Fort Lauderdale Beach at 321 North Fort Lauderdale Beach.
So I'm noticing the number of incidents during the spring break period were about 500, which I'm not quite sure, that's a lot of incidents, but about 500. And, and I'm looking at the traffic citations that were issued, like 2,200, yet your costs were one-tenth the amount that the police department incurred. Are you sure those are the actual numbers?
So our, our response, when you look at the number of personnel, are completely different. I'm only deploying four personnel on carts per day.
Uh-huh.
Because our response is completely different than police's.
They have traffic a whole much less.
Okay, all right. All right, I just want to make sure that they were, that they were, you know, actual and not... Okay, all right. Any have, anyone have any questions of our Chief of Police or our Fire Chief?
I just have some comments eventually, but no questions. I'm sorry, no questions, though, thank you.
Because we have a few people that have signed up to speak, and maybe we should have them. But I want to see if they have any questions of any of the...
We have another, more information, too.
I think I would, I needed to go over ours real quick, and then I think the City Manager wanted to finish up.
Okay. We didn't have this as a backup, so we didn't know what was coming forward, so, okay.
Before Phil, Phil speak, if the Fire Chief can come back.
Chief Golan, could you please come in? You thought you could get away easily.
I had asked earlier about some stats regarding, the police chief addressed one of them, about suicide, suicide attempts, any type of drug overdose that may have involved fentanyl and the use of Narcan. So if you could share that information with us.
Yes, ma'am. So with that request, we took a look over January, February, and March. I isolated it to the beach as well as the citywide. And we didn't see really any true variance in what we normally do. So for January, we had Narcan deployed six times on the beach, with citywide being 67 times. In February, we saw Narcan deployed seven times in that immediate beach area where spring break was taking place. And then Narcan, citywide, 86 times. And then for the month of March, which would have been the spring break time period, Narcan was only deployed twice in that, that general area. However, citywide, it was 82 times. Normally, we see Narcan deployed about 80, 60 to 80 times per month in the city as a totality. In regards to suicide, in that, that response zone on the beach, for January, we only saw once. February, we saw no, none. And then in March, we had seen six responses. But as the police chief had mentioned, that those six responses, more than half of those were related to one individual that was having some challenges and was eventually incarcerated. We also, citywide, for suicides for January is 14, February is 13, and then for the month of March is 30.
These are suicides or suicide attempts?
Those are suicide attempts.
Well, one guy did it three times, so obviously...
All right, well, he skewed the numbers, okay.
Did, can I, does police administer Narcan also in the city?
Yes, so both police and fire carry Narcan and are trained to administer it so that we can get this life-saving drug unseen as quickly as possible.
I think Commissioner Beasley-Pitman wants to follow up.
Yes, for March, you said it was 30?
Yeah.
Was those attempts or actual suicides? Do you have a breakdown?
30 attempts, he said.
I think it said, overall, for the city?
So these are, the difference, the way we separate it out is a suicide threat and a suicide attempt.
Okay.
A suicide attempt would mean that they're doing something to actively take their own life, whether it's overdosing on, on something, threatening to jump off of something, along those lines. These numbers are not the threats, these are the actual, where they've overdosed or something along those lines.
Okay. And March was how much overall?
In March was 30.
30, okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a lot, increase from 13 to 30.
What was February? February?
February was 13 citywide, and January is 14. And normally, we do see an uptick in those around holidays and things like that.
So, so when you say an overdose, or sometimes those overdoses involuntary? I mean, a suicide is a deliberate attempt to take your life. If an overdose is sometimes involuntary, where you don't realize you're taking too much of a drug and you may die from it, so, but you include all those in one category?
Yes, so there could be some overages between the Narcan administration?
Right.
And the suicide attempts, depending on, the one is pulling the data every time Narcan was administered.
Right.
Now, the other side of that is also Narcan could be administered in just a normal code, not knowing why the individual had coded. One of the protocols is to administer Narcan immediately. So when you're seeing numbers with Narcan being administered towards 82, those can be offset some, where there's going to be a variance there between, you know, say, an individual, we respond to a suicide and we know that they've overdosed on something, one of the first things that the crews are going to do is administer Narcan.
Any further questions? Okay, great, thank you. And Phil, you want to finish?
Yeah, Mayor, just to finish up on the park side, we had our crews working in the evenings, coming in at 3:00, working past hours.
I have to tell you, everyone said how beautifully clean the beaches were every day, so...
Yeah, thank you very much.
Your folks are just amazing.
We heard a lot of positive comments this year. I think staff, so in the past years, we had a contractor assisting us, and this year, a couple of things fell in place. First off, they decided, after they said they were coming back, they decided they didn't want to come back, probably because of the work. And so we decided just to do it ourselves. And I think you could see that our staff took much more pride and worked much harder and was able to get it done much quicker as well, using our own internal staff. So we did that, and, and again, with police help, when we, when they would clear the beach, then in the evenings, we would get it done. And usually, by 8:00, we had everything ready to go for the next day. So it's tough to clean when, when it's full, because you really don't know how much, I mean, you can't see all the trash until everybody's gone away. And I will say, the kids this year, as, as the chief said, our staff felt like they were, there was probably a little bit more than in past years, but they were much more respectable to everyone, not only picking up after themselves when they were asked to, you know, our staff would kind of go through and ask them to as they're cleaning up, can you guys help us out? But they were very respectful and really helped us out as well. So whatever kids were here this year, we want to invite them back next year. They were well behaved.
So let me ask you, what, this onslaught we're hearing about seaweed about to attack Florida, we're prepared for that to continue with our cleaning efforts?
We're prepared. It's going to be a challenge if we get the blob that everybody says we're going to get a blob from. You know, it's sometimes frustrating for staff when they clean it and they turn around and look behind them, and it doesn't look like they've been there very long. But they will definitely do it. We do up our staffing and continue to run as long as we can. The challenge with machines out there, Mayor, is that once the beach gets crowded, or gets enough to, it's not safe to do that, then we have to stop. And we can go farther north, maybe where it's not as crowded, but, so we'll start as early as we can. So as soon as, the way we operate is, as soon as the turtle monitors come through and check for turtle nests?
Right.
Then they'll release us to start cleaning. So that depend, depended on the morning, how quickly we can do it. They come in at 5:00, hopefully, they can start at 5:00, 5:30. But they may be held up for a little bit to make sure the turtle monitors have given them the go-ahead. But once they do that, then they'll, they'll keep going as long as they can until it just becomes unsafe with too many people out there. Good days, it rains, and we can clean all day.
Right.
But on a nice sunny day, you know, by 9:30, 10:00, it starts to get a little dicey out there, and we have to pull off, and then we'll, we'll come back, you know, later in the evening.
Okay, thank you. We have a few people signed up to speak. Bill, and Steve West, and John Burns again.
So Mayor, just three things there under recommendations. We'd like to recommend that you all consider that we minimize events during the spring break period for next year, to not have any other events. As you can tell, that was one of the comments from the neighbors. Also, limit hours of operations for bars. They can pour alcohol till 4:00 AM. We find that maybe having a consideration sooner, earlier in the, in the morning hours, maybe 1:00 AM, could allow us to recoup or use our resources a little better for the next day. And also, consider asking the bid for support. As you can see, it does require an ample amount of resources to maintain and keep the beach as it is. So perhaps, as the beneficiaries benefit from spring breakers, we'd like to see if they can assist as well.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Mayor, Members of Commission, Vice Mayor, Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Alliance. It's good for once to hear that I think the residents are seeing the same things that the Commissioners are hearing and seeing as well. Compliments, law enforcement, great job. Their presence was seen. The enforcement, especially on the rideshare, the residents of the Central Beach and the Barrier Island saw that and commented on that. And the parks and recreation, the cleaning of the beaches, we've all mentioned that. Some of the concerns, there's really not a lot, but I think there's areas of improvement, and that is, after 6:00 PM, when they do the police sweep, the beach sweep, then all the officers are working the beach detail and overtime, they're relieved. And so the residents didn't see as much of a presence at night, when a lot of the intoxicated students are out at night, going to the bars. There was a much higher level of intoxication of students walking the streets and side streets that they had not seen in present years. To hear the comment that maybe looking at the hours of operations of the bars could help that, I think would be a positive thing. The other thing was a lack of portable restrooms. In years past, they had one, I think last year around the city parking garage, one on, was it Fifth Street? They've had them in the past, and one, I think one year at Sebastian, that there was a lack of portable restrooms, and we don't know why. And that's maybe something we should look into for next year. And then, of course, with the higher number amount of trash, maybe we should be a little more proactive. It's great to hear parks, staff, asking the kids to help pick up the trash, but maybe earlier in the day, and I think it was talked about, a suggestion at the Fort Lauderdale Beach Council meeting about maybe putting ambassadors at each entrance on the entrances from the seawall, coming onto the beach, hand out trash bags during the daytime hours to those students. So those are all positives that we can build upon for next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Steve, followed by John Burns.
Thank you, everybody. I was pretty much going to stay, a lot of things, but most of it's been said this evening. But I want to start off by something good, and that is commending the police department for, you know, how they handled things this year. I'm the General Manager of La Solis Beach Club. I think you all know that our location is right next door to Beach Place and the Rock Bar. So we have some extra special challenges that we do.
Ground zero.
And I will say that, and I want to do special attention, Monica has been awesome to deal with. And, you know, every time we need something, every time I have a question, she answers her phone, she answers her text messages, and it's been fantastic. So I do appreciate everything that she does for us. So along with those praise, then there's always the however, right? I think the police department did an overall great job. From my building's resident's perspective, there seemed to be, after the beach closed, like Bill had said, it's great that there's a ton of police there during the daytime, but at night, it appears there's almost zero. The cars in the parking lots behind the Rock Bar, opening their trunks, pulling out their coolers, blasting their music, getting drunk, doing donuts, street racing, and it's pretty much zero enforcement from my homeowner's perspectives. And I know that that's not necessarily the case, and may seem like an exaggeration, but that's the impression that the homeowners are getting, that they're not getting that. From a planning perspective, I agree that there needs to be an overall coordinator to assist with these types of large events. I can tell you, as the General Manager of my building, and I'm not an unknown quantity in the neighborhood, that I get zero communication from anybody from the city in any department other than Monica. And that's generally, at the beginning of the year, I reach out to her and go, hey, let's sit down and have a conversation. So I want to make that aware, that absolutely, that is probably the biggest priority the City Commission should focus on, which would be assigning somebody as the overall head and communicate with those people who are on the beach to, you know, help with even our ideas of how we can help things out, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. John?
Thank you, just a few comments. John Burns again from the Venetian. My comments are really on pedestrians. We had traffic control officers at A1A in La Solis. They really did a good job of controlling pedestrian traffic, because there's so much pedestrian traffic right there. But again, we can't forget about Seabreeze and La Solis, because there's so much pedestrian traffic coming from the garage, coming from the water taxi. And when you're trying to cross Seabreeze, cars are trying to make a right, and nobody can go anywhere. The traffic can't go anywhere. So I would ask us not to forget about La Solis and Seabreeze. Again, the water taxi, we don't seem to have a permanent location for the water taxi, and the locations that they have are pretty decrepit-looking during the construction. I am concerned about some of these floating party boats, particularly that 70-foot pontoon boat staying afloat. When they disgorges 60 and 70 people from the boats, not only do they wait for the boat to get on, because they've got their beer and their wine, and they need to use the bathroom, and in the parking lots, there are no bathrooms. So I have watched them in the courtyard parking lot using the bathroom. Sometimes they'd go down the ladder into the water to use the bathroom, and when the boat comes back, they're using the bathroom in the bushes. I actually watched the St. Pat's event promoter from the city fight them off, because she had restrooms there, but she was trying to save those porta-potties for the Saturday event. So we really need more bathrooms. We did have like three or four trash dumpsters in front of Bo's Beach House on the sidewalk. I know that's an area where they clear the seaweed and dump stuff, but those big trash dumpsters just sat there all of spring break, and it just wasn't very pretty. I would ask us to be cognizant of their early morning deliveries, because on Seabreeze at the 7-Eleven, in the courtyard in Coconuts, I think my last picture had six delivery trucks lined up blocking a lane. And one final thing, we had an emergency in our building, and the golf cart EMS showed up. So it worked very well, and we appreciate them sending it so quickly. So I called it a golf cart, whatever it was.
Okay, thank you so much, John. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Anyone from the Commission want to add anything else?
I would, Mayor, just a comment. And maybe this is something that we can discuss with our noise advisory task force as well. During spring break, especially for a prolonged period there in the beginning, my office was getting a lot of emails and calls, and we were on the phone a lot with staff and Code and the residents in and around Jackson Tower in particular. But, you know, we joked about it a little bit before about the baby shower, but actually, in the PRD, the decibel level is allowed to be much higher. And so, you know, when, when you get noise complaints, and you, and you go out and you go, oh my God, it's deafening, but then you, you do all the testing, and you're finding out that it's, you know, it's close to 85, which I believe is the max in the PRD, but it's really not in violation of the decibel level. So I don't know, it's always a tough, tough, tough balance when you have residential in a PRD, because obviously, those PRD zoning districts were created for planned resort development, that's what it means. But again, the rub comes with the residential and the quality of life.
Well, maybe we need to revisit those, those criteria.
Well, I think that's exactly what I'm bringing this up for. So yes, we do need to discuss this going forward. Now that these, these, you know, entertainment districts are pretty established, and I know that we've talked about also revisiting the entertainment districts, not just on the beach, but also on Second Himmery Street. We've been talking about that forever and ever and ever. We do need to get a handle on it. And we need to get a handle on it for quality of life, and also for the resurgence, for instance, of the Himmery Street. But also on the beach, we need to talk about it in terms of the quality of life there as well. I don't think a lot of the beach businesses will suffer if we revisit some of these noise ordinances and decibel levels, but 85 is pretty, is pretty high. And if you're in a building just west, across the street, actually, from a lot of what's going on, and we just saw, you know, the number, I think the number, number-one complaints were Rock Bar, it's not surprising to me based on what I did hear from the residents during that time. And as I said, we spent a lot of time with Code, and they went out there, God bless them, they went out... And as I said, we spent a lot of time with Code, and they went out there, God bless them, they went out there every single time. But all of the readings that we found were, oh, it's within, it's within the allowable decibel level. So we do need to visit it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, there being none?
No, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to echo some of that. So again, a lot of credit to our police and fire for everything that they've done out at the beach. But similar to what's been echoed by some of the residents, I've gotten a number of complaints about things that are happening later in the evening. And, you know, I do have concerns. It took us a long time to shake our reputation for being Fort Licordale and the MTV Spring Break Capital, you know? So I think it's very important that we continue to maintain a posture of zero tolerance when it comes to behavior out at the beach. Again, I, we have worked so long and so hard to upgrade the facilities and the visitors at the beach that I hate to see us slipping backwards in any way, shape, or form. Spring break is not what we've been trying to develop at that location for these many years. The investments that we made through the Beach CRA, when that was an area of slumming blight, is something that I want to make sure is preserved. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? There being none? Okay. Mr. City Manager, do you want to add anything else to this? You're good?
No, we're good, we'll follow up.
Okay. Onto Commission reports, back to you, Commissioner Hurst.
Thank you, Mayor. So the one thing I do want to bring to the Commission's attention is unfortunately, the negotiations I was engaged with, with Miami Beckham have proven to be fruitless.
Didn't we decide to appoint a mediator to intervene here?
We did, and they reached out to me and were desirous of trying to reach an agreement before we went into mediation, at which point I said, well, we've got a very small window of opportunity to do that. I had multiple meetings, and we reached what I thought was an agreement in principle, which involved the city making what I thought were significant concessions to Miami Beckham. Again, thought we had an agreement that would be amenable to all parties. They have since come back to me and suggested that the city take over the full cost of building the park. And I've said to them that that is absolutely unacceptable. First of all, the foundation for the entire P3, what established the public purpose that made that whole thing legally feasible was the park. If we're not building a park, there's no basis for the public purpose, and I would say that the entire project no longer meets the requirements of state statute, so.
Wait, wait, back up again?
If I may, let me do that.
No, I just want to make sure I understood what you just said. They said that they don't want, they don't want a park there, or they just said?
They don't want to pay for it. They want the city to pay for the park.
When you said build it, I thought you meant we build it and they pay us back.
No, 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 they want us to pay for the cost of, all the cost of the improvements at the park that are included in the comprehensive agreement.
Now, who were you dealing with when you said you spoke with Inter Miami?
I was dealing with a representative from Mas-Tech who works with Jorge Moss.
I think, did you mention his name?
I did last time, yep.
Because, I mean, I've been dealing with that organization for a while, I never heard of this person. And so I just want to make sure we were dealing with somebody who had the authority to even represent the organization. But again, you know, I didn't want you spinning your wheels because I thought we had all agreed that it should go to mediation, and let's see what we can work out.
I think this was the last ditch.
I have heard from Mr. Moss himself that he was planning that they will build this park. So that's a complete 180 from what you're telling us now, because I've heard from his very lips that we're going to go ahead and build this park. The question has always been, what is this park mean? Because we've now added pickleball courts, which was never really part of the original park. I think it's a great idea, but we just have to tell them what we want them to build.
We're working on that. So we're working with, as you remember, the Commission's authorized a ECOM to go ahead and finalize the design. So that should be coming back in the next couple of weeks. We already had what was fundamentally agreed to with the many, many meetings that Commissioner Moritis had with the community. We had a plan that was drafted back in June of 2021, quite a while back. I have taken that plan, and we have taken out one of the multipurpose fields, and we've added the pickleball courts at that location, a very minor change. You know, again, not substantially different. And again, just a reminder that we're not asking Miami Beckham to pay for the pickleball courts. So it spells out in the comprehensive agreement precisely what it is that they are responsible for, and that includes fields, walking trails, dog park, certain other amenities. So we're not, we're not expecting them to cover the cost of any of the things that are not in the comprehensive agreement. I certainly would not expect them to cover something that we are responsible for. So again, like I said, we were, we were hopeful and working towards what I thought was going to be a mutually acceptable deal. That has fallen apart, so I think at this point, and I've expressed this to both them and to the city attorney, that we need to move forward with the mediation. So I just wanted to bring you all up to speed as to where things stand.
I'm with you there. Okay, very good.
But Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go right ahead.
But first of all, D-Wayne, I have a question for you. Is a stadium a qualified project under 256?
Well, the Commission, when they approved the comprehensive agreement, deemed the qualified project, which is defined in the agreement to include the stadium, the training facility, and the community park as a qualified project.
Okay.
Okay, but again, and I understand what you're saying. Again, Commissioner Hurst, with all due respect, because at the last meeting when you mentioned, and the mayor mentioned actually, that maybe we didn't have to do mediation because we were working this out, and I asked you who you were negotiating with, you gave me a name of a guy named Daniel Lyon.
Daniel Lyon, Daniel Lyon, yes, sir.
And I'm finding out that Daniel Lyon has no authority to speak on behalf of Inter Miami or Jorge Moss. And I'm finding out there's other things, so we need to definitely go to mediation.
Well, that's, we've all agreed to that.
We need to work this out because I'm not, I don't have 100% confidence in the information I'm hearing today because it's not what I'm being told or what I'm hearing, and that that just threw everyone for a loop. So I really want to get all of the facts out, I want to get all of the information out. I don't think that you've had multiple meetings in the last couple of weeks with Inter Miami, which you just said, I think it's been maybe one meeting or a phone call with this guy, Daniel Lyon, who's, what I heard was like.
Well, aside from that, let's just, let's just.
I just want to get the facts.
All right, so let's just move on to mediation.
So let me give you the facts, I've had two meetings and multiple phone calls, so.
With Daniel Lyon?
Yes, sir.
And who is that?
He works for Jorge Moss.
And he speaks on behalf of Inter Miami?
He speaks on behalf of Jorge Moss.
Okay. Well, again, I just need to find out more information because I'm hearing too much conflicting information.
At this point, it's moot. So we're moving forward with mediation, and that will be hopefully the resolution for it.
I certainly hope so, because we got to get this done.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
Anything additional? Commissioner Hurst?
So before you move on to that, though, I haven't heard from, I sent a letter to Miami Beckham with regards to those mediators, I haven't heard back from them. Should I be reaching back out to them, or?
So I think you're waiting to hear from Commissioner Hurst today before, all right?
All right, I'll wait their response.
So that's kind of inconsistent. Either I'm dealing with somebody from Inter Miami who has some ability to move the bar forward, or the person I was dealing with when Inter Miami doesn't have the ability to move the bar forward, in which case they should have been selecting a mediator. So it's either one or the other. Either the person I dealt with has capacity, or they don't. If they don't have capacity to engage with me in that respect, then they should have accepted one of our mediators. If they're holding off and accepting a mediator, that implies the person I was dealing with had some ability to negotiate. So which is it?
No, I don't think that, I don't, my information was they weren't holding off in recommending a mediator. They were, they had wanted to see what your report was about before they went forward because there seemed to be some confusion that you were talking with somebody in the meantime when they, when I thought, I thought this Commission had already agreed that it would go to a mediation. And then you came back and said, well, wait, we don't need to go there because I think I'm making some progress. So in deference to you, we said, okay, well, we'll just hold back. And I think everybody was holding back until they heard what report you had to give today.
Well, but Mayor, that's inconsistent. If they were waiting, it has only to do with somebody that they thought had the authority to talk on their behalf. If this individual did not have the authority to speak on their behalf, there was no reason for them to wait. There was no report for me to give if the person that I'm talking doesn't speak on their behalf.
I don't know. All I know is that we all have now agreed, let's got to go to mediation. Mr. Spence, can you please communicate with them with regard to their choice for mediator? If we can all agree on that, I thought we had agreed with Jack Silas, so let's, let's move forward in some direction, and if you get that.
Actually, no, Mayor, we did not agree on that. We profit our list, Mr. Spence profited our list to them of a number of mediators, and they have not responded back with any of those at this point. So we have not selected anybody. We've offered up a list.
Who came up with this list?
The list was generated from my office.
Oh, okay.
All right, so if you could follow up with them, Mr. Spence, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. John, anything further?
Do we have to approve this list or not, or just, just leave it up to Mr. Spence? How does this go?
I think we should remove ourselves from selection of mediators. In order for us to be independent of this, I would rather leave this up to the Attorney's Office.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Beasley Pittman, tell us about the National League of Cities.
Wow.
I heard you were part of it. That's okay, that's a reputation.
I'm gonna go down my list to share. Starting with March 24th, I attended the Broward Workshop, 15th Annual State of the County. Mayor, Broward County Mayor Lamar Fisher was there, he spoke. And also, there was a presentation that was given regarding the megaverse, metaverse, and explaining how it's trending in technology, very interesting, as well as, in a sense, intimidating. That process, that technology is really, really mind blowing. And on March 25th, I traveled to DC for the National League of Cities. I was there to the 29th, had the pleasure of traveling with our Vice Mayor, the City Manager, and also Daphne Sandville. We had a wonderful time. One of the highlights was the opportunity to sit and hear First Lady Dr. Jill Biden address the conference, which was amazing. And she was speaking in regards to job opportunities and education in our nation. Also, while we were there, heard about an opportunity that's being offered through our federal government. It's called Good Jobs, Great Cities. It's an academy that's being offered through a grant-type situation, maybe I should be saying a lottery. You apply for the opportunity, and then they're going to select 12 cities from the nation. But with this opportunity, it will accelerate the city's opportunity to develop a launch workforce initiative with courses, pathways that will lead to good jobs that are created through the investment of the federal government. I think this is an opportunity that we should put in that application to see if we're able to attain that particular funding. And the jobs that they're talking about and what really captured my attention with it, understanding where we are, not only nationally, but in our cities and our counties, due to the pandemic and the death toll, so many jobs are now open because those people are no longer here. They're not working in those jobs. And what we should be doing as a nation is training, educating, and inviting people to do those types of jobs, which are now basically open because there's no one trained to do them. And you're looking at, some things are plumbing, electricians, even to our teachers. Whatever the situation is, there is funding where we can begin to train the workforce. So I'm asking as a Commission that we consider applying for that opportunity to see if we could receive that funding. Also, on, well, y'all didn't say anything, what do you think about that?
What's that?
What do you think about that opportunity?
I think it's a great opportunity.
Okay, all right, it was crickets in the room, I wasn't sure.
No, no, I think, I think that anytime we can get money to help enhance the, you know, the workforce of ours, community, I think is a great idea.
Okay, great, because I really am in support of this, so I'm hoping that we could stand together, and like I said, have Daphne to look into that and apply for it on our behalf. The other items I would like to talk about as well, I did attend on March 30th the Broward League of Cities General Membership Meeting. I hadn't invited the diocese to come, my colleagues, and I know that the scheduling was such where everyone couldn't attend. But there's also one next month, so I'm going to leave it on the table for you all to come and be a part of those meetings as well. Also, I would like to discuss at this point, I did have a meeting with, this was on the 3rd, March, excuse me, April 3rd. I had a meeting with Parks and Recs, with Phil Thornburg, Carl Williams, City Manager, also with Nigeria and Debbie. And we were talking about upcoming citywide events that are held in District 3. And we were talking about the funding that is necessary to make these events successful and understanding that with the way they, the funding is right now, I would like to have a discussion with Commission to see, to move forward in receiving additional funds regarding those particular events. That would be Carter Park Jam and also the Summer Jam. And then also Friday Musicals at Riverland, which is also in my district, okay? And Greg, if you could elaborate a little bit more on that for me?
Sure. So we are working with the Commissioner because there's an opportunity to look at these events once again and see how they could be, or have greater success. So the Carter Park Jams right now is budgeted at $4,000. After looking at past delivery of the same event.
Isn't that $4,000 per event?
$4,000 per event, and they're five times. And in the past, we spent a little more, and also we have inflation and costs have risen. So we are proposing another $4,000 per event, making it a total of $8,000 per event, which brings us to ask or request $20,000 to fund the series for these events.
For the Carter Park event?
For the Carter Park Jams.
Does that going to come off of any of the others? Will that, where is that money coming from?
So at this moment, we haven't identified anything specific, so it would come out of fund balance for right now. But I believe the Commissioner is bringing this up just because there's an event scheduled for April 21st. And so we would need to at least get the first one established just so that we can start planning and booking the entertainment for that event for the 21st. And we can also come back with more specifics on the additional events, such as Summer Jams and the other Carter Park Jams, so that you all can formally discuss it and approve it at the April 18th Commission meeting.
Well, is $4,000 the magic number? I mean, what happens if it should be $7,000 or $3,000? I mean, where is the $4,000 going to be applied that we feel is going to make it a better event?
I'm going to ask Phil to come up because he was part of the discussion on that.
And Mayor, I'm not opposed to looking at options, but I will tell you what I'm opposed to.
What's that?
I'm opposed to process. I'm opposed to the fact that typically we would have some backup, we would have facts.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking now.
But the public also would have facts, information in front of them. It would be an agenda item. This is, this is a little unusual for us to just disregard the budget that's in place, and then without any backup and without any information to the public, no transparency. But I don't really know what I'm talking about because I can't see anything.
Well, this, the purpose, the purpose.
Without any notice to the public, that's all.
Okay, this is what my intent is, to bring it to us so we can have a conversation, not getting out of process, but letting you know that this is the discussion that I've had in District 4, Citywide, District 3. And then we will prepare for the next Commission meeting with all the things that are required. Now, it's my understanding during my time with the Commission, during this time, I'm able to share those things that I have concerns with. So I'm utilizing this time to do that. Thank you.
And I think part of it is the fact that it's April 21st, I think you said.
Correct.
So we're kind of close, so if we get some heads up from Phil, give us a little understanding. So we're kind of close. So if we get some heads up from Phil, give us a little understanding. I think your comment regarding process is important, but I don't want it to necessarily derail the opportunity we may have here to put on a better event. So Phil, can you tell us a little bit about where this extra money would be applied?
Yeah, the extra money would be applied mainly to the entertainment side of things.
So you get a little better entertainment or more entertainment?
Right. Both.
Both.
But probably more, better entertainment. So the hard costs are the hard costs. I mean, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we just rebid, had to rebid the sound and lights. That went up about 23%. So that, that's gonna go up some, the hard cost. And you have, you know, some of the smaller things that go along with that, the porta potties, things like that. But it all comes down to, and what do you have left after you do what you have to do? And that is what you got left to pay for entertainment.
Is 4,000, is the $4,000 increase, is that enough?
Yes. So i- in this case, so again, Commissioner mentioned, we sat down with staff and the, and the manager yesterday or the day before to talk through it. And they know that, they know what talent's out there. They know what the going price is for that. So we do feel that if we had another $4,000, we could bring in the entertainment that would continue at the level that the community has expected in the past.
Okay. So my question is, so the hard costs have gone up, which means you have less money for talent and you need more money just to make up for the, the extra for the hard costs.
Correct. And entertainer, and the talent's actually gone up some as well. When they came out of COVID, everybody wanted them, right? So they're, um, so even, you know, the entertainment prices have gone up as well. So, um, everything's gone up just like everything's going up. But, you know, we have a fixed budget and we've been, you know, understandably directed that we have to stay within that budget. So in order to pull that off, it may be, uh, you know, you and me out there playing. So we'll see.
And if I could, um, share also in that discussion we had with the, the 4,000 that is, um, allocated at this point, after what has been suggested, it was disclosed that it was only like $800 left to do anything. So this is showing you where we are in far as lack of funds to adequately put this event on. So that's why we're asking for additional funds.
Got it.
So the 4,000 that's budgeted for each event, what, uh, is the budget? How does that $4,000 break down for budget?
So right now we have $4,000 per event and she's asking for another 4,000.
No, I understand all that. The $4,000, break it down for me.
Well, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I remember from yesterday, like Commissioner, Commissioner mentioned, after we pay all the hard costs, i- if we continue with the hard costs, we can always get rid of the portable restrooms or cut back or cut back on the sound. You're gonna have, you know, you may not be able to hear it as, you know, as, as well as typically. But once you put in what you think we need a hard cost, then you have the 800, about $800 left for entertainment.
What kind of entertainment are we usually talking about at Carter Jams?
It's, it's local entertainment, but you're, you're probably talking, I mean, m- most entertainment's gonna run you from maybe, maybe 800 up to 1,500, uh, you know, to 2,000 depending on who it is and, and how many you're gonna have, things like that.
At our, at our Jazz Brunch, do we have local entertainment?
We do.
And why do we go for outside sponsors to augment the entertainment at Jazz Brunch? In other words, could we try to do that here as well in the future?
We can. And w- we have, Commissioner. We haven't had a lot of luck. We did have, so, um, Bank of America has been the, the, uh, title sponsor at, uh, at, um, the Starlights for years. Used to have SunTrust at, at Jazz Brunch, but they actually pulled out a few years ago. And then we had, I think JM came in for a couple of years and then they left. And I don't think we have one now for Jazz Brunch. So I have talked, we have talked to the City Manager about, you know, the sponsorship side of things and seeing what we can do to, to do that. And I know there's a, you know, we're, we're, we're working on that as a plan, not only for events, but citywide for all, all kinds of things that we do to try to find sponsorships. But i- it's something we can l- look towards and we try, but we, you know, it's not something I think you can bank on every time that you're gonna have a, a title sponsor.
So the 4,000, the $4,000 that's budgeted per event, you're saying that it's leaving us only about $800 for the talent?
Correct.
So if we double that 4,000 to 8,000 per event, so the talent will now get 4,800? The talent will go, all that money go to talent?
No, because there are other increases.
There's some more increases. And, and I, I believe when we first talked about it too, the, the sound, uh, again, if we're gonna have a, a, a higher level band, they're probably gonna require a little bit higher level sound. It, it all kinda works its, its way up. As you get higher level entertainment, then your, your sound and lights goes up as well. So it's all kinda, you know, backstage stuff, but you have to provide additional, hard cost to put for entertainment as well. So it's.
So maybe I misunderstood. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that when we said that we were only left with 800, that was incorporating all of the increase in costs that we were experiencing due to inflation or whatever else. I thought that's what we said before.
I would say most of it, correct. There's probably a little bit of cutbacks, maybe, uh, uh, one or two less portable restrooms and probably a little bit cut less on sound to, to try to give us as much money left to do entertainment.
Right.
But there's only so much of that you can cut back.
But I'm saying, are we gonna still be hiring local talent instead of giving them 800? We're gonna give them 4,000?
Well, we're, we're a couple talents and, and be paying them more, yes.
I understand.
So it, again, it's, it kinda varies on who's available and, and how much they're gonna cost and what level of talent you want. But that's, that's what staff is estimating they would need in order to be able to put the event on at, at a high quality level.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
We, we intend to come back with all the details. We just, I think, are asking right now for just, uh, approval for moving forward with, um, with an additional $4,000 to meet a high quality event at the next Carter Park Jams.
No, I, I understand and I'm all for it. I just, as I said, it's just highly unusual for us to approve a change to the budget in this way. That's all. I mean, I don't.
We'll bring the formal process together on April 18th with specifics and backup and all justifications aligned.
Thank you.
All right. That's all that I have on my mind right now. And, um, again.
Be able to act on that? I mean, do we have to vote for that?
You would, because there would be a budget amendment.
Right. So do we do that tonight? Or do we do it at the next meeting? What is, what's the deal?
So right now I just need direction for the next, uh, the April 21st one. But you will be voting on something, um, on April 18th.
Okay. Okay. Okay, very good. Uh, Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Herr. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Tuesday, March 28th, uh, participated in an excellent meeting. Thank you to TAM and also the FDOT staff. We had a virtual meeting regarding the, improving the intersection, uh, capacity and addressed solutions for Gateway, US1, Sunrise. Uh, and then also there was an in-person meeting on, uh, that Thursday, March 30th as well. Uh, Wednesday, March 29th, had the pleasure of speaking.
How did that go? Yeah, how did it go?
I couldn't make that. I had a conflict. I wanted to go there. How did it go? It, it went fine. It's just the first, trust me, the first step in a long process. Lots of solutions were offered, lots of, um, ideas. Uh, they received a lot of input from the community. Um, this is the first of many, many, many meetings to come on that intersection of, uh, Gateway, uh, area and US1 and Sunrise. So it went well. It was, it was very well done. Um, you know, everything was explained. All the options were explained, lots of maps, um, all the reasons why, costs, uh, the work that would be involved. I mean, it really got into the details. And now there'll be a bunch of public hearings, um, and there'll be follow-ups and there'll be more, uh, detail. And then eventually, uh, a decision will have to be made. But, um, a lot of interesting proposals for, um, that intersection, heavily, heavily traveled, uh, intersection. Uh, Wednesday, 29th, had the pleasure of speaking, um, with the Birch Park Beach, uh, Homeowners Association. Uh, it was a wild night. The weather was crazy and they still had a nice crowd that showed up, showed up at the Beach Community Center. So that was great, uh, considering the weather. Uh, Thursday, March 30th, um, every city in the county participated in the in-person Solid Waste Working Group meeting at the Sunrise Civic Center. Um, and, uh, I'm gonna, did you wanna take that seat, Vice Mayor? This is your last chance. This is your last chance. Go, go for it, Vice Mayor. I know you were doing it. You were inched your way over. He's got the gavel. He's ready to go. This is your, okay. I, I mean, I, I want you to be happy, Vice Mayor. I saw, I s- I saw the movement and as long as you're happy. Okay.
Couple hours.
Well, let us continue. Let us continue. Thank you. Yeah, he's, he was, he just saw the mayor go to the bathroom. He got so excited. Okay, uh, you're, you're good now. Okay. Uh, all right, moving right along. So every city in the county, uh, did.
Hold it.
Hold up the gavel for, uh, Commissioner Herbst. Okay, good. Uh, put that in your newsletter. Thank you. Um, all right. So, uh, as I said, every city did meet in Sunrise. Uh, we had a great meeting talking about the inter-local agreement that your Solid Waste Working Group, uh, has hammered out with every city and the county. Um, and then that will come back to every city for ratification before we can move on. This is a huge endeavor. Uh, I think we're shooting City Manager for maybe May 16th to bring it to this commission, uh, to look at and study the inter-local agreement. Uh, that's for the disposal of waste and also the recycling of waste. Um, it's a huge initiative. So, um, that was, uh, a, a good meeting. Uh, Friday, March 31st, um, what a pleasure to attend the Downtowner of the Year Award for Gina Ellis. Uh, congratulations, Miss Gina. Uh, that was a, a beautiful evening. I will treasure this fan forever, uh, cause I am a fan of the fan. Uh, but it was a beautiful event, uh, honoring someone who has just contributed so much, uh, to the great city of Fort Lauderdale. So congratulations. No, you can't have the fan, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry. He's trying to get the fan. Um, tomorrow, uh, actually, we will, uh, be looking forward to attending the, um, Botanical Garden Dedication Ceremony for Joanne. I think she was here earlier. Uh, so we, we look forward to going to that and honoring her work at Stranahan Park. Also, um, tomorrow night, uh, is the beginning of Passover. So for all of those that are celebrating Passover, uh, that begins at sundown, uh, tomorrow evening, a holiday that is all about, uh, freedom. Uh, Tuesday, April 11th, I'll be attending the meeting of the International Swimming Hall of Fame. Um, also that day is the Broward Partnership for the Homeless Salute to Leadership. Uh, that's an honorary reception. I'll be very proud to attend that as well.
The city is receiving, um, the, an honor for that, for the work we've been doing. So it'd be great if everyone in the commission could attend on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say all that during my Commissioner report.
I'm sure you were. I just wanted to remind you.
Right there and.
It's okay.
It's okay. Did you want your gavel back? Here. Uh, hold on.
Wow.
You, you missed the top. You missed it, Mayor. He, he didn't take a beat. He didn't skip a beat. Here you go. Okay. Um, uh, I'll be speaking Wednesday, April 12th at the Sailboat Ben Civic Association Meeting. And as we know, on Saturday, uh, April 14th is the beginning of Tortuga. Um, I will tell you also, I want to mention, because I will be thinking about this this evening, um, but today is the 55th anniversary of the assassination of Martin Luther King Jr. Um, and during tonight's Moment of Silence, I'll be contemplating that, uh, as well as thinking about and grieving for the six families in Nashville who lost loved ones, including three nine-year-old children. Uh, that is the same week that the state of Florida has legalized permitless carry of firearms. So I'll be thinking of all of that when you call for that Moment of Silence. Uh, and that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, four things. Um, you have your gavel back, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. Four things that I want to talk about. Number one, um, I did the pleasure of going up with Commissioner, uh, Pam Beasley Pittman, Vice Mayor and, uh, delegation to, uh, Washington D.C. for our League of Cities. Um, two things that, uh, strike me from that visit. Number one, um, uh, we're not the only ones that are worried about homelessness and affordable housing. That seemed to be a huge theme among all cities in the nation, big and small, big and small. I'm pleased about a few things. Number one, Florida, the state of Florida had the third largest delegation up there. And the other thing that, that makes me really proud is, uh, everybody's worrying about infrastructure, uh, water treatment plants, how to deal with, uh, water breaks sewer, um, how to fund water treatment plants, P3s and things. I think for the first time, we actually are ahead of the curve. Other cities were coming up to us, seeing how we gotta handle on it. Of course, uh, we didn't have a choice with the water breaks, but the fact that we're taking, uh, being very proactive at this point, the fact that we've signed an agreement for the water plant, that we've signed a P3 and, uh, other cities are looking to us. It really made me very proud to be, uh, be part of the city of Fort Lauderdale. I think it's something we could really look up to. Um, number two, um, uh, just I want to reiterate, there's going to be a presentation. Real vs Civic Association is gonna be the lead, but it's gonna be, uh, on the coyote issue. And, uh, uh, Fish and Wildlife will, will participate at the actual, uh, presentation on that. It's not just open to the Civic Association or D4, but to the entire city as, as a whole. I encourage everybody to go to that. Um, on the 12th, which is a week from this coming Wednesday, we will have a, uh, open forum on, um, on La Solis Mobility. They will be presenting there. We'll have, uh, traffic and mobility, the City Manager and the residents there. There will's the, uh, consultant to go over for, for my district, uh, La Solis. And the last thing, um, something came up in, uh, in our pre-agenda meeting, uh, that I think that we might want to think about. Uh, would it be possible to give us, the new members here, a little update on flex units, uh, how they work, uh, you know, and all that? That's something that I think might benefit our commission at some point.
Yeah, we could bring that at next conference.
Okay. I think that might be useful. That's my thought. And that's it.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Um, just a few things. Uh, attended a number of events, uh, over the last couple of weeks. One in particular was, um, I was proud to represent, uh, my Greek-American friends here in Fort Lauderdale, attending the White House reception for Greek Independence Day, uh, on the 29th. And, um, I have to say, it's probably the first time in history that the White House experienced a Greek line dancing on the steps of the White House. So Dolly Madison probably raised a few eyebrows, right? Anyways, uh, a great honor to be, uh, to meet the, uh, the President, of course, and, uh, many members of the staff. It was great to be able to participate in the DDA and Chambers Downtowner of the Year, uh, event this past week. We recognized our own Gina Ellis, who's sitting there in the back of the room, once again, for all the great work that she's done. Thank you so much, Commissioner. And, uh, let's see, and last Friday, excuse me, last Saturday, attended the Harvey Milk Awards Diversity Honors, uh, event at the Hard Rock Casino, a, a great event and, uh, um, and all the wonderful people who participated in that. I also attended at the Hard Rock, uh, the annual gentleman's dinner that St. Anthony's Catholic Church puts on. That was last, last, uh, Thursday. And, um, very, very well attended, uh, people from throughout the community who, uh, participated in that. And I, it was a great fundraiser for the, uh, for that community. Shortly, we'll all be able to visit the, uh, with the Japanese Council General, Kazuhiko, um, Nakai, who's waiting upstairs for us, uh, to, uh, to greet him and some members of his staff who have come to our community. On April 5th, Joanne Smith, Botanical Guards Dedication. Joanne was here earlier. I don't think she's here now. But, um, this, the community will be dedicating, uh, the, a Botanical Gardens section, um, to Joanne Smith, who's been very much a part of, uh, enhancing the, the, um, the, uh, the beautification of our city. And, uh, let me just see, just cut to the chase here. Uh, again, April 11th, the Broward Partnership for the Homeless is, uh, is recognizing the city of Fort Lauderdale for all of its efforts, um, in connection with trying to achieve, uh, net zero for the homeless population here in our city. Um, part of that, uh, is inclusive of our efforts to participate in the building of Seventh on Seventh, which is a housing facility for, um, for, uh, mothers and families who are experiencing homelessness here in our city. Um, and I guess that's it for now. I just want to bring up one thing, if I could, an issue regarding the rain tree. I'm very concerned about the, the status and condition of the rain tree right now. And, uh, um, from what I'm reading in the news, and I don't want to think that the news alone is the source of facts, but I'd like to know, like, what's going on with the rain tree. It's, it's suspended in air right now. It's been that way for months. I know that if I was suspended in air like that, I'd be kind of shaky. So, uh, how is a 100-year-old tree being able to survive? And I want to know, you know, what is the, what is the condition of that tree? Uh, and do we need to make any, any efforts to try to find another location for it? If it's not gonna take, not gonna be, uh, placed on the site, um, we need to do, uh, we want to save the tree. So, Chris, what are your thoughts?
Understood. So first and foremost, I am not an arborist, but I've talked to one of my staff. So I'm, I'm really relaying that message from them. So, uh, we, in terms of staff, um, formerly Public Works and now an arborist with DSD, have been monitoring the rain tree, um, since it's been on the move from its original site to its current site. Um, part of that is we get. Part of that is we get regular, I believe it's weekly, reports from the arborists hired by the developer to monitor the tree. And then obviously, staff is going out there and visually inspecting the tree as well. So the tree, as far as I know, is currently on a suspended rack with an irrigation system underneath it for the roots. Every indication is that the tree is still in good health. It's going through some greening cycles right now, so there's some evidence of some, like, I don't want to say dead leaves, but old leaves that are falling off the tree, new growth coming in, which our arborist has said is an indication the tree is still in good health, is going through a growth cycle. The permit for the seawall repair, which is what's really held up the installation of the tree, was issued by us, I believe, last month. In my understanding is that the seawall work will begin in, well, this month, April, maybe May, but I don't have any clear indication of exactly when that work will start, other than the permit's been issued, so it can start.
So the, so it's, the ball's now in the lap of the developer to get that seawall built.
Yeah. The holdup for the installation was that the existing seawall, which was to be replaced as part of the new development, wasn't structurally sound enough to support the tree where it was supposed to be installed. So they needed to go back in and, and make those repairs so that the tree could be installed and be supported.
So shouldn't that, all that have been done before the tree was uprooted?
If it were my project?
Yeah, I know. I mean, he has a responsibility to the city, the community. I mean, that was a promise.
Right.
All right. But you're saying that the tree is, is stable and will continue to live?
Yes. That's what I'm being told by our professionals and the reports that we're receiving from the developers' professionals.
And how long until it could be replanted?
Once the seawall's done, that's when the tree can be permanently installed.
Yeah. Estimated is?
It's a good question. I mean, the seawall work could take anywhere from a month to months, depending on materials.
It's gonna take at least three months to build that seawall.
Right. But 2023, hopefully, sometime. Oh, I would hope so.
So Chris, I did read a letter from Tropical Designs of Florida to explain their opinion of the tree. Are they our consultant, developers' consultant? Who, who hired them or who works with them?
So I'm not sure if Tropical Design is the developers' arborist. I do know that there is an arborist that the developer has hired to provide us with regular reports, and then we have our staff that are arborists that go out and review those reports and then go out and inspect.
And they have done that recently?
Well, this letter is April 2nd. We, we did get a letter April 2nd about monitoring the tree and the condition of the tree. And like Chris said, I guess they've been doing it for eight months, the last eight months. I am familiar with the syllabics and cycles of this tree species, as it is typically a deciduous or semi-deciduous tree species, and this particular tree is no different.
Okay.
As of last Friday, I found the rain tree to be in good condition while it is growing out a new canopy of healthy foliage.
Okay. All right.
Tropical Designs of Florida.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
I have no further comments. Mr. City Manager, do you have any additional thoughts?
Sure. Because this is a hot topic and it involves public safety, I wanted to ask Chief of Police to provide an update to you all about the SROs and discussion that's been going on with the contract.
So just to update the commission, the school, the school, the school year started last August 2022. We have an arrangement every year with the school board that we're reimbursed a certain amount of money every year pursuant to a contract into which we normally would have entered into by now. My understanding is we have not yet entered into a contract with the school board yet, and we have received absolutely zero money from the school board for all these many months that we have been protecting the kids in our schools that are in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Chief?
And that is correct, Mayor. The City Managers Association had, I believe they labeled it an emergency meeting, Zoom meeting, earlier this afternoon. The outcome of that was, I think, I don't recall the president of the City Managers Association or chairman, what his name is, but they're gonna continue to try to meet with the school board yet again. Essentially, we are at status quo, where we have not been reimbursed, and there's no movement on the school board side that I know of. So that will be the next step. And I think the chiefs are still in agreement that we're not negotiating with the school board and that the, the next step will maybe the City Managers Association can make some progress with that.
Well, I mean, this is completely irresponsible. First of all, they tax the people the extra millage rate in order to fund the SROs, and then they pocket the money, would not give any of the money to the, to the, to the cities that are providing the SROs. So I mean, this, I mean, I mean, the next step, of course, is to sue them, but what's the point of that? It'll take a long time for that to go through the court system, but I mean...
I think they were very embarrassed at their board meeting. At least it appeared that was. This was a big issue at their last board meeting.
Well, embarrassed and schmarished, that we still don't have any money.
Embarrassed what?
Whatever.
Okay. So that was noted.
It's Yiddish.
How, how many schools and how many offices are involved?
We only have SROs in our high schools and middle schools, yes.
It's like 10 schools, right?
10, correct. We have 10 SROs.
Yeah.
And a supervisor.
And we're expecting, I think I read, and again, correct me because it's not always accurate, but I think I read that we're looking for approximately $70,000-plus per SRO for reimbursement for the school year?
Well, what we're asking for is $104,000.
$104,000.
We're asking for them to come closer to the actual cost, and $104,000 still does not reflect our actual cost.
Okay.
But that's a county-wide average, essentially.
Right. But I think we've, in the past, we've been given what? Do you remember? No?
Oh, yeah. The, I think we were at 72 for the...
72,000?
64,000, I believe.
64, okay.
Okay. So it's not even, it's a little more than half?
Not even.
A third of what it actually costs most.
A third?
Yeah.
And we, and even though...
I mean, if it's 100 and we're getting 60, it's two-thirds.
It depends on what you're, if you're comparing it to the $104,000 that we're asking for, or if you're comparing it to total actual cost, the total actual cost are more than $104,000.
Yeah. The actual cost that's been, that's been proffered in the past has been about $155,000 per officer.
That's just a third.
Right.
I mean, Mayor, we're not even close to some of the other cities that, you know, Coral Springs provides 22.
22 SROs?
Yeah. Coconut Creek even 12. David's 16.
And it's, it's getting ridiculous, because I know there've been some administrative changes. We get all that, but ultimately, the kids have to be protected. And, 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 you know, that doesn't seem to be a priority to them. They, they took the money and, and they're not fulfilling the obligation that they have to use that money as the citizens thought that the money was going to be used. If the city said, well, we're not providing any protection because we're not getting paid, obviously, we're not going to do that. So this becomes a burden on us when, in fact, it should not be. So, so that's the status then, right?
Correct. They noted that, at this meeting, they noted that both Palm Beach and Dade County have their own police department for the public schools. We don't. And they also noted that the taxpayer is getting taxed twice because they're getting taxed for the millage, plus the cities are subsidizing that public safety function.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all. Okay. Mr. Spence, you have, did you say you have a closed door? You had said to me...
I'll announce that later, after the evening's meeting.
I'm sorry?
I'll make that, that announcement after the evening's meeting.
After the evening meeting. Okay, great. Anything further, this, any further business?
We have CRA.
I know, I, I, I know that. But is there any further business of the conference meeting?
No, but we have CRA.
Yes, I know that. Thank you. Here, have an M and S. Relax. Okay. The, the City Commission Conference Meeting is now concluded, and I'd like to begin the, the CRA board meeting. Mr. City Man, Mr. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst.
President.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Vice Chair Sternman.
Here.
Chair Trentalas.
Here. Okay. So we have M1, motion approving the minutes for the March 8, 2023 Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. Garhir, motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Garhir second. Approved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sternman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalas.
Yes. And M1 is approved. M2, motion accepting the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency Annual Report and Audit Report and authorizing to transmit to the taxing district.
That's an old agenda.
Oh. I'm sorry. It came up, that's, okay. Thank you for, thank you for correcting me. I appreciate that. So there is no M2. It's an R1. Okay. Thank you. Resolution, that did sound weird. Okay. Resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the Florida Power and Light easement for underground utilities at CRA-owned properties at Northwest 8th Street and 740 Northwest 10th Terrace. Any questions regarding R1? There being none. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Some move.
It's been moved.
Please call the roll.
A, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency granting easements to Florida Power and Light Company for underground utilities on real property located at Northwest 8th Street and 740 Northwest 10th Terrace, authorizing the executive director to execute the easements and deliver to Florida Power and Light Company, providing for severability, repealing any and all resolutions in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sternman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalas?
Yes. And that resolution is now approved. Is there any further business of the CRA board? There being none. That meeting is concluded, and we resume our meeting this evening at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Is there any further business of the CRA board? There being none, that meeting is concluded and we resume our meeting this evening at six o'clock. Thank you.